We are going to call the morning work session of the Clickat County Board of County Commissioners to order, and we are going to begin with public works. Gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have one item on your consent agenda, number three, and it's a final acceptance and release of retainage for the courthouse asbestos abatement that we did here this year. On the construction program side, still waiting on our report for Roosevelt Grade Road paving. Guardrail starts on the 26th, our guardrail specific project to repair damaged guardrail in the county. And the strippers actually came back and started yesterday. I saw them drive by when I came to work this morning, so they're out there, phase two, finishing up all of our chip seal work that we did. Clickat Path, county crews paved it yesterday, or yesterday, last week, and they're working on the concrete as well. I've already got a couple of calls from people complimenting us and saying how nice it looked. Yeah, somebody wanted to hire the contractor that did that. And I'm like, well, that was our county crews, so they did a really great job paving out there. Let's see, Courtney Road, they started paving this week on the lower section, and then they're still working on shaping ditches, and we need, we talked about briefly additional material, a need for other material, and so we have some options because we have to keep going. They ran out of material, and other than shaping the ditches, but it's not enough. There's like seven to eight thousand yards of material. So if you look at this picture on top, you can kind of see there's like a pile of rocks in the foreground of that first picture. That's about where, from there around the corner, there's about a seven-foot thick wedge of material that needs to be placed in there to complete that, and that's what we're short through that big, huge fill. So you kind of get an idea, this fill, the fills out here are massive. Let's see, on the second, flip that one over, the second side, you can see the off-road truck and the relative size of it compared to that fill, so.
And that's looking up from that picture on the front.
Yeah, basically, I just turned around from that spot and shot up the hill. So I'll let Jeff talk about the options that we came up with for material.
Okay, there's a couple of options. You have, I come up with three different options, talking to the contractor and whatnot. You can use the contractor's quarry, which is ways down the road. That option's about $365,000. This is, now, remember, this isn't because we didn't, and I don't know how much Gordy got into it last time. The reason we're short of material is, is we had less Hard Rock X than we anticipated, which is actually good because you don't want it to go the other way. When you're estimating it, it's still a crapshoot, so you take what you have when you're estimating it, where you've actually found rock, you expand what you think the length of that rock is and the quantity, and it wasn't as big as we anticipated. The other way you don't want to do, because then it's a lot more money. So there's a big savings on this, so inevitably, it's still a savings. So that, so the pit run from there, the other option is, another option, is we get material we have in Bingeon. We have been, we have material in Bingeon, and that's about $320,000. The third option is, and this is more of an unknown option, is to take it from a different location. Problem with that, though, is there is no location within the project limits to do that. If you go outside the project limits, you end up now, you re-trigger SEPA, Archaeological Survey, and everything else, which means you do not finish the project this year, the dirt piece of this. Because you're at SEPA, at least, you know, we took off today, you're at least two to three weeks out even before you file SEPA, because you've got to get an archaeologist out there to wherever, whatever site you go to.
What about Randy Knowles? I mean, we took five or six thousand yards from our Courtney Road project in there. Can we go back and dig that back up? And that's all been, that's just fill?
You're right, and I looked at that, and, and you cannot, because you're going to dig within, outside of those limits, and even though it's fill, you still have to have an archaeologist say that it's fill material. And since it's not, that's.
We have an archaeologist that said it was fill material, because from a previous contract, that's where we put it.
No, you're, but you're excavating, that's the problem. When you excavate, we still have to redo our SEPA, because it's outside of, within our limits of where we're disturbing. That's the biggest problem. And when we do that, DHAP is going to say, where's your archaeological survey for this area? And we could say it's fill, but they're still going to want an archaeologist to go out, look at it, do the research, and make sure, because why we put six, seven thousand yards in, a fill material, we're going to take out more than that. So we're going to be in the soil that we haven't disturbed. So that's the biggest problem, and the savings is not that tremendous, because now you're paying for the contractor to X out the material and bank it, reclaim the area, and without the cost of talking to Randy and seeing how much he wants for it, or anybody else. Again, I don't want to just throw his name out, there's other options, but we're still around $250,000.
To haul it that much?
To dig it, to haul it, reclaim it, reseed it, and everything else, and put in all the BMPs and everything else, because now you have a new disturbed area. Doesn't include, like I said, I didn't include the SEPA and all that. Or the other thing is, if we winter the project over, especially with open soil, I don't recommend that up in that area. We've done that before, and it just, it, there's a cost to that. My recommendation is, the quickest thing is, we take the material out of, out of the known source in Bingeon. It's contract prices, we already have for it, it's not a negotiated thing, and they'll just put the material in, and they keep moving forward.
And it's all, and it's all, is it dirt or is it rock?
It's rock. It's much stabler, and if we do end up with rain, it'll stay in place.
Yeah, it's ballast.
It's ballast.
It's more rocky than dirt.
Yeah.
And I think that's our challenge now, because Dean's already told us that, you know, if we go somewhere else, you know, open up a new site just for him, he's going to add 20 days, which is a month. In a month this time of year, now we're pushing November before we start putting crushed rock on top of that.
So if we come out of our quarry or his, he'll, we're still within the working days of the contract?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll start tomorrow.
Yeah, they'll start hauling tomorrow.
So what's the difference, bottom line, between the, what we saved in Rock X and what the additional cost would be? Because is there still a net saving?
There's still a net savings. That's, I.
I think we were like four.
We were four something.
Four, four thirty or four fifty with the Rock X savings, and so we're three.
Three twenty.
Three twenty.
But we did have the fuel, but that was within the contingent.
That's still within the contingents.
Yeah. Yeah, I think time, time is really the critical piece here at this time of year.
You don't want to winter that over.
No.
We'll spend $100,000 in rebuilding and fixing things, because we will have problems.
Yes, and we won't open the road, which is not what we.
Rioters, I'm not sure what that's worth.
Right.
Oil's so expensive right now, the boiling oil thing. Hard feather, feathers are still cheap. So that's out of our quarry in Bingeon?
Yes.
And did we have anything else for that that we'd planned on doing, or is it just sitting there?
It's just, the ballast is just sitting. We have to crush there anyway, so, and we're reaping a good price for it, that's why it comes in. I mean, the haul's, it's, the haul is closer than out of Huesum. That's the biggest thing, but the prices are pretty comparable for what we would get from the other quarry, just because, remember, we crushed back there. The project's seeing the prices we got when we crushed in.
Fifteen?
Fourteen, I think, so.
As I said, we're going to have to re-crush to make up our stockpile, and those prices are not going to be seen on this project.
No.
Probably should be seen on this project, because that's what's positive.
So that three twenty is just James Dean's price, like, the rock.
That's including the cost of the rock. That's everything.
So the three sixty-five out of James Dean's pit is including the cost of the rock and everything?
And then placing it, hauling it, and everything. The three twenty is the same thing. It's the cost to, for Dean to haul it, load it, place it, and the cost of the rock.
So, so you're paying us, us the three twenty, because it's our rock, right?
Well, we're getting a portion of that, yes. We don't get all of it, because he has to still place it, haul it.
Right, but, but of the three twenty.
You're getting about half of it, yes.
Half of that is coming back to the county.
Yes, exactly.
Crush more rock.
Crush more rock, yes.
For next year.
Yes, that is correct. So, yes, not only.
As Mr. Christopher said, it's going to get replaced with more expensive rock. And so I guess the question would be, the delta between the three twenty and the three sixty, so $45,000, is the replacement rock for the quantity going to cost more than $45,000? If it does, it's actually cheaper to use Dean's rock than it is to have ours, and pull it out of stores that we're going to have to replace with more expensive material.
Yes or no?
This is just your Spalls, though, right? This isn't your crushed?
No, this is crushed ballast, but when we crush, we have, the reason we need to crush, there's a couple of reasons. One, we don't have rock in any other place but here in the far reaches of Pickleton. So at the two ends of the county, it's the only place we have rock. When we crush rock, people always say, well, why don't you buy it? Well, one, there's a lot of reasons, but the biggest reason is the two byproducts we get, which is sand and our chip seal rock. We'd buy that on the open market, it's 25 to 30 bucks a ton. We get it for, last time we did it, I think it was six bucks. So let's say inflation, maybe it's 10 now. But to make that, you need to have a certain amount of ballast and a certain amount of base course, because they pull it out of there as a byproduct. So we would still need to have the ballast anyway, and we would crush ballast. Originally, that rock was crushed for these projects.
Yeah.
That's, that was the reason that rock, that big pile of rocks been sitting. It was crushed for this project.
So we're, we're using the rock that we'd planned on for this project, and we're going to take the hundred and sixty thousand and crush more rock so we get the next project?
Correct.
That makes the most sense.
Yes.
Versus buying somebody else's.
Somebody else.
And hauling it further.
And hauling it further. Yes. The contractor actually would prefer to use our stuff, because it's closer.
Yeah.
They could turn it quicker, and we're using, I mean, there we use a scale, too, but it's, it's just quicker. He can get it done faster, and he wants to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, it's coming out of, coming out of our quarry for the rock that we crushed for the project. What do you think?
What is?
That was very committal of you.
He doesn't like this project anymore.
All right, courthouse parking lots. We're meeting tomorrow with our in-house guys, our carpenters, to do the concrete work, and our maintenance crew to do all the paving and the rest of the base material where Annex Three and Five used to sit. So we're going to do that tomorrow, schedule that work, so we'll complete that here in the next six weeks, hopefully in the next four weeks. That'll be the plan. Rock Creek Bridge, Sundale Road, and the federal safety projects, we're working on the design on those projects to get them ready for next year. On the maintenance side, county crews are grading, spot graveling, and patching in Goldendale heading east. And on the west side, they're working on the Clickat Trail, they have concrete work this week, and they'll be wrapping that up hopefully this week, so.
That's why.
We got her.
You got it, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
It took us two or three weeks to get it, though.
Yeah, it's just driving me crazy. It's like, I don't know what the weather is going to be like two weeks from now.
Right, yeah.
Roll the dice.
We talked about, on the facility side, our building parking lots, nothing new on blinds or HVAC, we're working on solutions for the two areas. Pioneer Center HVAC, no change, the work should start the first of October, and then I think Rick said that the units, the new units for the courthouse were scheduled to be, to arrive to the vendor in October, so we haven't heard difference, so that's what we're hoping for, and hopefully it'll be soon enough that they can actually get them in this year, I don't.
Yes, that's what we're, that's what we're still counting on.
Radio site?
Radio site, they're moving right along on the shelter, they should be done in a week or two. We actually have the specs finally and the plans for the tower, so we're reviewing this week, we're going to get them back to them, and the idea is to go out to bid very shortly. And that will take care of the biggest piece left.
Follow-up issues, Middle Road, so the Lund Hill Solar people should finish grading tomorrow. You know, if we don't get moisture, it probably won't be long, and it'll be washborne again, at least in that section. And speed limit science went up yesterday, so that change, the restriction went into effect yesterday, and so the sheriff can now enforce that, so. But everybody's been notified, so shouldn't be, if they do exceed the speed limit, it shouldn't be, won't be because they didn't know. And that's, that's it.
We most generally always know.
Yes.
Just my own experience.
That's it for our items.
Any questions? No, have, have we had any contact with the sheriff about this? I mean, was there any interaction with him? We're going to, he's going to be in for a briefing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or he's aware as far as the changes.
Yeah, we talked about it after the prosecutor brought it up, that it was a possibility, and then I called and asked if they would enforce it if it took effect, and they said, yeah, sheriff's been very supportive of our efforts.
We can follow up on him today.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have an emphasis for a week or two.
Yeah.
We really need it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Unless, let me know if you cancel one of your concrete loads, so.
Okay. You can slide in, maybe.
Oh, we're also working with the bear paw request on New Road, so we're working with those folks.
What?
Bear paws. Yeah, so painting bear paws as they approach the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a long time since I've seen those.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up, we have our public health director, Ms. Quinn. Good morning.
Nothing but good news.
Oh, yes. I'm a ray of sunshine this morning, mostly due to the high-acting coffee they made me.
That's where the good stuff is in the building?
I can't confirm or deny that. Once I get mine, maybe. As long as I get mine first. So you have the numbers in your packet, so there's, just to look over those. As far as the COVID case goes, this is probably the last time I'm going to put the numbers in this. There's a lot of changes with the COVID, with the end of the emergency orders. Currently, they estimate only about 26 cases are actually being reported through the regular channels, so people that have actually gone into a hospital or a clinic setting and got a test. So even though the numbers are low, considering about 26% of that, so likely, likely, we will discontinue reporting that out even on our website after the 31st of October, because that's just kind of when the state's downgrading their response, I guess is the best way to put that. We're starting to give boosters downstairs, we were only getting the Moderna by Valant, I think they had 34 people on the schedule for boosters today. It's for 18 and older, we're not getting the Pfizer this time, so people that need Pfizer can go to Hood River Health Department or KVH with the COVID.
If people need Pfizer, they can cross.
They can, yeah, absolutely, but if you're committed to your one brand, there are opportunities just not with us to get that. But yes, if you've had Pfizer, you can get the Moderna booster. With the state of emergency ending on October 31st, I think the biggest impact to us really is going to be how we've used volunteers. We are looking at, we're going to have to reevaluate who we use based on licensing, because there were some special rules about who we used during the state of emergency that will no longer be available to us, and so we'll have a conversation with those people and work with them to either get their licensing back or get them medical assistant licenses so they can continue to support us if we feel that's something we need to do. We are required to do an after-action report for COVID, that's part of the state Public Health Emergency Preparedness work. Most other counties have contracted that out, so someone will come in and do the bulk of the work of looking and interviewing for three years, what went well and what didn't go well. We do have the money for that, and so we're working on professional services contract. We'll use the same people that Ben Franklin used, we work with them pretty closely for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness work, so they've recommended the group that they used, and we will likely use the same, so that may come across your desk. As far as monkey pox goes, we still have not had any confirmed cases in the county. Currently, the health department is the depot for the antiviral medication, the T-Pox. We have it in-house, so any case that is identified and confirmed, we'll check out the antivirals to the healthcare provider that's treating them, there's, it's a emergency use authorization, so there's a lot that goes into how that's dispensed, so we hold all of that, and then we'll, we'll dispense that as needed to any providers for a positive case. We do have the monkey pox vaccine, and we gave six vaccines in August, and I think there's a handful more on our schedule that are coming up, so we have that. We did have our vaccine audit yesterday for the vaccine program, so they came in and went through all of our refrigerators and made sure everything, I haven't gotten the final report yet, but I was told it went great, so that was great. And then we did coordinate rabies vaccine, the clinical staff did, for six children that were exposed to rabies, so that's, that's the largest rabies exposure we've seen in the county, so that was a big deal, there was a lot of lessons learned about that.
Were they exposed?
At their school.
Did it test positive?
It did not. They were unable to test the bat because of the way it was handled. So it was found dead, it was frozen, it was handled, it was refrozen, and then it was sent to the state, and it was found that the tissue was inadequate for testing, which is when the determination was to vaccinate, because we couldn't definitively say yes or no.
So they may have been exposed to rabies?
Eventually. I think it's a low risk, but rabies has got 100% fatality rate, so certainly that's not a risk to take.
How does that work? I mean, you can't notice symptoms and then treat?
Uh-uh. Once you have the symptoms, it's too late, it's untreatable. I think there's documentation of less than five people in the world that have survived once they've exhibited symptoms. So even with a low-risk exposure, we still recommend vaccination, just because that's just not a risk you want to take.
How long does a vaccine last?
We used to do titers every two years for the veterinary folks, so typically, you would want to redo your vaccination. I've seen a decrease their levels within two years, I've seen people last up to six, so.
Depends on how often you're handled with the bat, I guess.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't do tighter testing for someone that's not actively being exposed, like just the general public wouldn't go get a titer. So if you had a rabies series, you would be considered vaccinated, unless you're having continual exposure. So if you're a veterinarian, you would probably get a titer. If you're our staff that's managing animal heads and bats that potentially have rabies, we would tighter test them. But the general public, we don't, in the military, they don't, once you have a series, Clinical for environmental health, the numbers are there, I think we talked a little bit about what the numbers would look like. We definitely are seeing less cytovels in 2022, but these numbers are on track for what we saw in 2020. We still continue to feel 2021 was a little bit of an off-year, so we're seeing pre-21 levels. I think they said they did, what was it? 16 total cytovels this year, there was 12 in 2020. The permit counts, there was 15 this year, 40 last year, and 15 in 2020, and I know that the graph doesn't have the 2020 statistics on there. Our water lab, we're not seeing really any changes from last year. For food safety, their plan's been working with Scaminian County, or starting to work with Scaminian County to get their food program taken care of, well, Nikki, our environmental health, that mostly covers Scaminian County's on maternity leave until January. In addition to the rabies exposures that we managed, there was four additional bat encounters that the environmental health team managed. We did fill our nurse positions starting September 6th, so our nurses are fully staffed again. As far as the health officer goes, so Dr. Person's last day was supposed to have been September 1st, she was offered a position with the state, they asked her to end her obligation with us with the contingency that they would cover once she left. So we asked them to cover us starting in September 1st, and they declined, so she very graciously offered to cover another month till October 1st, just because she was told the state would cover us, I was told the state would cover us, and then they were unable to keep their commitment to do that. We did post the health officer position on the county website, that will go out to a couple other public health entities here in the next week or so. At some point, you all will have to interview the health officer as their position that answers to the board, so. We are looking at it, so our WIC coordinator is retiring December 1st-ish, first week of December. One of our internal staff will be transitioning into that role, so as she transitions out of her role, which is, has been a fiscal role, we are going to look at contracting an insurance biller. We've never had an insurance biller in our office before, someone that's actually coded, billing and coding certified, and so we're going to look at contracting an individual that was highly recommended, so that contract is ready and should cross your desk in the next couple of weeks as well. Likely, it's going to be a lot less expensive for me to utilize that service than it is to hire another staff, so we're going to try to fill that gap without filling that position. I'm not going to promise that's going to work, but we're going to try to do that as a stopgap. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it for, for public health. Questions about any of that? Oh, Facebook canceled our health department website account, however that works, because we were advertising COVID vaccines, just for the record.
What?
We had advertised our new COVID vaccines, and they canceled our account. So, just a fun fact for the day.
Rising?
Yeah, I just was told that, I haven't figured all that out, but I thought that was a little interesting. Yeah.
Opposite of what I would have expected. Got to watch out when those algorithms go a little wacky.
Otherwise, that's public health.
Oh, no way to get it back?
I, I don't know. I was just told that that happened this morning, and I haven't looked into it yet.
Assuming somebody reported it and they locked it.
Yeah, you'd think they'd lock it before canceling. Are you peddling, you know, illegal COVID vaccines?
I am not.
Rabies vaccines?
Rabies vaccine, yeah.
Outbreak because of the bad incident.
So we got monkeys, bats?
Yes.
Spending entertaining a month, huh?
Always in public health, it's not boring ever.
Huh.
You want to talk about mental health now? You want to talk about mental health now? I'm trying.
Does it involve monkeys or bats?
It does not, yeah. Well, there might be a correlation there. So we have a couple of things to cover. Lifeline has agreed to continue their contract with it during the crisis triage until January first. So just wanting your direction, I don't see any reason why we would tell them no.
And did they say if they were interested in going after that, or is that like, they're like, we can do it until January?
My sense was that they would do it until January first. I don't want to wear out my welcome, so I was just doing pieces at a time. So if we would like to continue, I'm going to say yes, they did offer us an opportunity to put the contract under our Beacon contract, which we don't have yet, or just leave them. I'd like to leave them under Beacon unless anybody feels otherwise, just because that's logistically easier. Because they just add money to the existing contract.
Right.
We don't have to get involved, which I'm a big fan of in that regard.
But it's not under Skamania?
No, it's straight from Beacon, so Beacon is contracted with Lifeline. I'm assuming that's a yes. Okay, thank you. The behavioral health application has certainly been more time-consuming, I think, than really we understood. I think it's mostly done. I know I have a piece I'm going to try to get done today. There probably should be some discussion on what will happen if our license is not granted November sixth, and what everyone, how we should manage that. Even if we do get our application, I'd like to explore having the staff as contract staff. That just gives us more time to get together the appropriate org chart approved by the commissioners, the job descriptions. I know that would help me, and I know that would help HR just do things correctly without scrambling to get things done. So I think that's one of the things I'd like you to consider, but also what if we don't get the behavioral health application? I do know there's some conversation about whether Comprehensive is leaving. As of yesterday afternoon, I was assured by their leadership that they were not leaving, that there was a change in services, but not, or a change in volume, not a change in services. I've actually asked for further clarification about what services they can offer in, in that timeline, so I know there's been a lot of conversation about them not being available, and that's not the information I was given by their leadership, so I don't know how that works.
So how are they going to provide services if they don't have anyone?
I, I can't answer.
Depends on what services and what kind of divide.
Me too. Anyway, so the consultant actually has proposed two different staffing models. It's anywhere from seven-point-five FTE to thirteen FTE. I have those for you to look at. And then just some really serious conversations about if, what we want November sixth to look like, and what January first looks like, and what our other options are. No, I'm asking you all. I would love for you to have the answer for me, and I would support that.
I mean, we've already, the direction we've given is that we need, you know, to bring three-plus DCRs on by November to cover the service until January. I'm sorry, but when I hear, when Comprehensive says that they're going to continue providing service, I don't have much faith in that. I don't know if you gentlemen do, but I don't know how you have faith when you don't have anybody here. It sounds like we're going to have to do the full boat, or we're going to let it go. And if we let it go, then we'll just see everybody in the ER. I think there's a lot of potential benefits in bringing on at least, you know, the seven. From what I understand, Beacon will be covering pretty much all the costs. We won't be spending county dollars.
See, that's the clarified question is, are they, aren't they? What's the difference?
Well.
Is there a difference? Is there a difference between the seven employees or eleven employees?
We also have, you know, we had a meeting with Molina, and they can bring dollars in. I mean, right now, there is a lot of money out there for public health, and Beacon is required to provide services here, and we're stepping up to the table, and I think they're going to spend more money than they probably want to, but they have to provide services.
I would say that's my worry is, yes, there's a lot of money for public health now, but is there in two or three years? And if we step up and make some Taj Mahal of services, and then we have to roll that back because the funding isn't there anymore. Two years from now, whoever's sitting here is now the bad guy because they cut services. If you
We're going to see the same thing.
Be more of the basic services, and then they cut, you didn't have to roll back your, your county scope, and then you're not the bad guy, and you're crap, and roll it back on the funding dry up.
I mean, I think as long as the county isn't putting, it's kind of like public health. We're not putting any landfill dollars, anything into public health.
This year.
This year. But public health is also well aware that when the funds dry up, like all soft money organizations, those positions go away. And I think you can start with the same expectation and understanding that if, you know, they step away, or the MMO step away, which they can't really do because they're required to provide services. It's the same thing, you know, Beacon is required to provide services.
So what is the difference between the seven and a half and the twelve and a half? Obviously, you have five employees, one of those five.
That's part of the other thing, because we have to do for Beacon, we have a contract on Beacon, they want our staffing model before we can get to the other health application, they want our organizational chart, and so what that looks like as well. One of the things that's not listed on the, on the the, the smaller one is a clinical supervisor. That's a requirement by the state. I am not qualified to be that clinical supervisor, so that would be a position that needs to be added to the, I think it's the seven-point-five FTE one.
So the seven-five would really, it would have to be eight-five.
Right.
It doesn't have, the clinical supervisor doesn't have to be full-time, correct?
I don't know that. I would assume that they did, but I don't know the answer. They have to be available.
Right. I mean, I'm kind of in the favor of, I'm, I'm interested in sustainability too. I don't want to necessarily staff up, staff down. We, we can say, which we do with all, you know, grant-funded positions. We always, that, that's the conversation we have with the staff, but not with the community. The community, once you provide a service, they, because they don't know where the money's coming from, they, you know, they, it is now an expectation, so I'd rather, I'd rather start a little smaller and then, because I think inevitably, funding is going to go down. And so I would rather kind of pick the, the midpoint, something that we have at least a higher probability of that we're just going to roll through, and people don't get used to that extra level of service. So however we accomplish that is what, and I, I mean, I love that we're not having to put dollars in, at least at this point, because we don't have any to put out, reprioritizing something else that already has a constituency, like I said, people, we can say, oh, well, we shifted the money because this, and they, they don't care. It's like, no, my, my thing is what is important, and you better keep funding that. So, you know, we said building the full meal deal would probably take three to five years.
Yes, I still stand by that.
And so I guess the, the difference is going to be, so if we do the, the base, which is, you know, three DCRs, then we'd have a sud P, so substance abuse, which we need to have. And then the crisis case manager, where hopefully half of that time can come out of adult probation. So you're creating that connection between mental health and probation, because it's in many places the same time. And then you've got some contract DCRs. Versus, you know, if we have the psychiatric nurse and the psychiatrist, you know, do I think that's needed in the community? Absolutely. If we don't provide it, who will? Where are they going to go to get their medications? It'd have to be the hospital or the ER, correct? And so you're not going to be a one-stop shop. You're not going to be able to do both. In terms of like child family therapists, I don't know if that's, I mean, the schools are doing a good job, I think, with.
ESD one-twelve, I think, has six therapists on staff this year to cover the schools, and they're trying to get some more in.
And so I don't know if we, you know, truly need that. I don't want to, you know, piggyback or double dip, or, or start stealing from the schools, you know, because you only have so many people. I guess that's another question, is what is our expectation? Like, we can, we can design an org chart with all these staffing positions, and then are we just going to have a bunch of empty boxes that we can't actually find any humans to fill?
There's, it's a potential.
So. We have interest.
Oh, but Rob would like to help me out.
So, Chair, and I've talked, there's a lot of risk involved. Our insurance company just has the general scope of coverage. I think we need to inform it, we're going to add a psychiatrist in that level of care, and, you know, our insurance doesn't cover malpractice. We have to buy a separate. As a, as an example, I think we were talking to Skamania County Commissioners, the liability is with events. I think higher level, you build the more service you offer, risk grows. It may impact your insurance.
I mean, in the end, my preference would be is, is if they want to give us all the money to do it, we build the full meal deal, and then we spend it off into its own agency, and hopefully, you know, you have someone like Skamania County, or, you know, another small county that you can do more like a regional agency, because your DCRs, I mean, why do we need all these DCRs? And Skamania needs the same number of DCRs when the singular number of DCRs could probably do both. And so when I see, you know, when you talk about, you know, the funding cuts coming in the future, that's how I see that getting fixed. So you can provide the same level of service with fewer people, because a lot of it is just staffing for twenty-four-seven. You know, your DCR might go on two cases a week, but you've got full-time DCR standing there. Yes?
Can I interject for a minute on the DCRs? Because I'm pretty familiar with how many calls they do get. Oftentimes, there is a DCR with two or three at KVH at the same time, as there's also one or two in Crisis at Skyline. So it's very reasonable to believe that those DCRs are extremely busy, and so, and I think you have to understand those numbers and really to make a fair judgment on, they're not getting two cases a week, and, or, that's not how that works. They might some weeks, but not in this county.
So there's, there's the DCR that provides, you know, the service for inpatient involuntary treatment, okay? And then there's what, we've been using the term DCR, is, is that most of your crisis, like the crisis line, the crisis connections, those are what you'd see, you know, that's doing the safety planning and everything else. You don't have to have a DCR for that.
Correct, but it's the DCR that's at the hospital. It's not usually the crisis provider. It is usually DCRs in our cases in Flint County.
Because that's what we had, we had, we, well, back when we had them, we had DCRs that were doing therapy and everything else, you know, the full meal deal. Which is kind of the direction we're going to be going in.
Follow your point. In this state, can the county or counties create an entity? Set up an entity?
You can, you can always do, you know, a COG, a council of governments, so there's, with the interlocal authority, you can, you can basically contract, you can, you can share across organizations, entities, and any right that any one of the entities have. You can actually transfer or con, you know, I don't want to say contract. You can create a regional. It gets more complicated when it's by state, but within the state of Washington, yeah, we, if we want to, we do it all the time because it is more, smaller counties, it makes sense that, because we don't have, like that, I'd, yeah, that would be great if Skamania and ClickitKat went together, because, yeah, we likely, there's savings where you could have for those on-call folks. You could have, I don't know if you're going to do it for half, you know, but you could, there were definitely savings. Savings because in the off time, you know, honestly, we should, there's a region, there's a reason they have, you know, regional dispatching. There's a, anything that's a twenty-four-seven operation. But to do it, then you have to give up some control, because you, everybody wants to run their own show. Not everybody, most everybody.
Not everyone.
Some people are happy to delegate.
Some empires are big enough.
I don't want to run any part of it. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy. I'm not an empire builder. I don't.
But, but this is, I mean, this is what, you know, Northern Washington, North Central Washington's done, is they've got multiple counties all under the same umbrella.
Do they have taxing involved?
Maybe you'd have to create a district. Taxing is different, yeah. There's only certain things that are authorized to tax.
What is your personal opinion on the different approaches?
Oh, no. It's not, it's not a good day if I have a personal opinion.
Or your professional opinion.
That's a better question. Let's stick with that one. I'm, I'm struggling with which one's the right answer, because I understand the need for services, whether or not it's our job to provide those services was what I'm struggling with. I, I would love to see an entity that could come in and cover those. I think there's a lot of liability. I think there's a lot of financial risk. I, I have a lot of concerns with pushing this through quickly. I, I just, you know, I support mental health services, and I think one thing when we've been talking is we haven't been seeing a lot of numbers, right? So it's summer, everyone's outside. Typically, that's when we're going to see lower numbers, but we're moving into the fall and winter, and you can look at almost any behavioral health graph, and we know that more numbers are coming, like it's going to get busier. We're going to need more staff, so where things have worked really well with some more minimal staff, that's, that's not going to maintain through the, the course of the fall and winter. That's just, that's just historical information, but I just, I think if you're going to do that, it needs to be its own department. I, I, it's a, it's a big, it's a lot of work to stand up a department. It's a lot of work to manage new staff in a new, that sort of thing, so I think you need to consider what it's going to look like to have a director over that. That's not me. That's my own personal opinion. I, I just, I think we've stood up some pretty incredible things. I think we've done good work in the last couple of months. I'm not sure if we're the right people to do the job moving forward. I think until January, that's kind of just our obligation. We need to do that. I, it's risky, and that concerns me.
How risky is it if we don't provide the services? Because we have nobody else jumping up, waving their hand, saying, I want to do this.
I'm not sure we've asked either, so I think there could be some more energy into asking.
Who's there left to ask?
There are other entities, I think, within the state that might consider doing it. I don't think it's something we can't do. I think it's something that if we determine we are going to do, that we need to proceed very intentionally and cautiously to ensure that it's done correctly, and to ensure that the risk to the county is minimal. There's always going to be risk when you provide mental health services, that there's no way to get around the risk. But I think there's ways to minimize the risk we're getting into.
Because I was under the impression that with Comprehensive leaving, there was no comprehensives to take over. You're saying there's other potential comprehensives out there in the world that might potentially take over, move in and provide these services in our county?
I think it's worth asking.
I thought it was already asked and answered, but, yeah, no, if it hasn't been asked and answered, that, that's step one that needs to be asked and answered. To me, anyway, I mean, if, if there's nobody around and we have to step up to provide a service, that's one. To me, anyway, I mean, if, if there's nobody around and we have to step up to provide a service, that's one thing. But if we're forming a new county department to turn something that I think should be private industry into more, more and bigger government, then I, I have a problem with that. So if there is entities out there that are competent, there's the kicker and capable of providing the service, I, I want to entertain that. Just because they're available doesn't necessarily make them competent.
I won't disagree, but I would ask how we would, how would you want to vet that?
Well, that's the hard part. It would have to be by people that know that organization, I guess, I would say. We have personal experience here with past employees and people suffering from mental health and their families that have dealt with comprehensive for years. I think if you ask those people, you're going to get the same answer over and over and over again.
Yes.
If we ask those people, you know, it's a different company, a different region, it shouldn't be too hard to find out whether the general public thinks they provide a good service or weren't on it.
I guess my problem is, is the time to ask other companies if they'd be interested. I thought we did that and I thought the reason we're going down this path is because we overwhelmingly got the answer of no, we're not, we're not interested. And coming out of Vancouver and all these other groups, that's why we have a behavioral health application put in. Going back to the drawing board and asking somebody to come in when we have until November to be providing the services and we're going to be hiring people. I think there's, you know, there's no way. I think from November till January, it's, it's bare bones. We're, we're hiring, we're trying to fill those positions. Hopefully in January, we could be providing substance abuse, we can provide, providing the things. The only change I would make is, is, you know, your psych, your psychiatrist, that's usually a contracted position. They have their own business, they have their own insurance, they have all that. And I understand there's one or two potentially that are interested. If we have somebody that's interested in providing the job, that's going to do a better job for the behavioral health system and we have Beacon and the MMOs that are willing to pay for it, why would we not bring, we bring contractors on for a multitude of things, why would we not bring that psychiatrist on? I mean, if somebody else is paying for it, that's one thing. If Beacon says we're no longer paying for any of these services, well then the services are gone. We're not going to pay $190 an hour for a psychiatrist if it's not being covered by the insurance companies or Beacon, which is, I guess, a still the insurance company.
And just to clarify, we asked if other entities were interested in providing DCR services. We did not ask if they were willing to provide the full package.
Do you have to set it up as a department first? Can't you, if there's another county partner out there to create this entity, be useful? Put the effort into that. Why would that take any more time than setting up our own department? Which involves about half the offices and departments to set up a department. It's a lot of work either way. You have to set it up and then hand it off to somebody or create that entity from the very beginning?
Uh, I'm worried that it is 9/20/2022 and we have a very short amount of time. And we've been running down this, if we wanted to create our own mental health agency, that's where we should have been going two months ago or three months ago. I just, I don't, I mean, and then it comes down to, so you create your own agency. So now you have to hide boards of directors. You, I mean, we're doing this with the bridge, trying to, you know, create a brand-new by-state bridge authority agreement. When you, you have to have your bylaws, you have to have all those policies and procedures, everything in place. Building a department, I think, is much easier than creating an agency.
I agree. I mean, that doesn't mean long-term, there isn't some kind of by-county. But to start off that way, I think you're just opening a Pandora's box of negotiations and conflict.
And, you know, right now, we haven't asked the public, we haven't been doing public meetings and public hearings and everything because we don't have the time and we don't have the bandwidth to do that. We're filling the hole, we're going to fill the hole. We'll start providing services in January. If we bring on a manager or a department head, that's where they can go and then ask the community and, and then maybe roll that into an agency. Right now, we're just trying to provide, we're providing the barest of minimum services right now. And we're trying to fill the hole that somebody else has left, that seems to be leaving.
Either way, Beacon's paying the, for now.
Correct. And Beacon is also working on standing up a behavioral health community council advisory board. They're taking the lead on that.
Statewide or locally?
Local.
Well, it's my opinion.
Has Beacon seen these numbers?
They have. It's actually, um, yes.
They helped put it together.
Correct.
They're.
They're fine with it.
Okay.
Scares you how much, how big those numbers are, right?
I mean, I don't see any, I guess I don't see a problem with, because I don't think you can't create the big thing in, in, by January even. It's like, we're going to phase into this regardless of what path. If we're doing, it's, it's going to take time for the, the more abbreviated one, it's going to take time to get that put together, set it up, hire the people, get going. It's going to ramp in. So I guess I don't, I guess I could support, you know, the, the larger one if they're willing to pay for it. Because all of these services are things that are necessary and we need in the community, whether it's our responsibility or not, I'm conflicted on.
That's, yes.
Um, but I guess no harm, no foul if somebody, if we're, I mean, we're basically already paying for it. I mean, as taxpayers.
Correct.
Because they, because Beacon is not pulling this money out of their goodwill. It's money they're already getting funded for.
From the state.
And it's from the state. So we've already paid for it and my, you know, I always felt like my job was, you know, we can have a discussion about is it a good policy or not to fund all this stuff? But when the decision's already been made, my job is to get every dime of that money back here because we're paying for it already. So I guess I would, I would support shooting towards the full meal deal in the, that's the goal. It's an aspirational goal and we start setting that up. And I would keep looking at the, you know, in some ways it's almost easier, like if we wanted to look at a regional thing down, it's actually in some ways easier to do that if you already have something that's up and running and you can say, hey, we're not making this from scratch. We already have it up and running. You've got this other thing, can we put them together maybe? And it, I think that's easier because honestly, I, I see this taking at least a couple of years to get, to get this thing fully functional and.
And so much of it's going to be opportunistic because you're talking about limited numbers of people.
Right.
I mean, you can create all the holes and all the positions in your budget and, but if you don't have people to fill them, which is the problem amongst all these companies. I bet you comprehensive would love to have seven DCRs here. Problem is they're down 150 people. And if they're down 150 people and it's not just them, it's everyone. I mean, we're going to have to fight tooth and nail and to keep people.
Great. So how do they, they're going to be, they're currently against them. MCMC, the Mid-Club Health, I mean, there's a lot of health services.
They're going to pay a lot of money.
Well, that's why I don't, you know, we talked about, you know, we haven't really had a discussion with the public. I don't really necessarily see, I mean, it would be great, but the public is going to say, yeah, this is what we want. They know what the need is. They don't really care that who is providing it or how it's getting provided and. So, because I guarantee you, all of these things are all really important things that people, we need in the community, these services.
I would imagine if we did decide to go with the full package, one of the first things we're going to be pushing to try to find is that director or manager to set up a department, how they, she's shaking her head.
Yes. I, it's, it's honestly, it's a, it's unrealistic that I can do both jobs at this point. It's, it's not working.
A month, eight, four to eight weeks to fill that position. Once you get it approved, once there's an old chart, once you, all the processes are in place, it's going to take you We went this last weekend, didn't get any applications for any job. Although that trend doesn't continue, so.
Yeah, I, I'd say we do the full, shoot for the full thing and go that route, knowing that state funding, when the state funding ends, we, uh, we have problems and we already have problems budget-wise, but because nobody wants to see one dollar removed from their budget for any reason whatsoever. This will be another one of those.
So one of them has designated crisis responders. And the full, full meal deal doesn't even say designated crisis responders on there. Is that what the adult therapist is? I'm looking at it. This one does not say designated crisis responders anywhere in there.
I did not catch that.
So.
And there's no clinical supervisor on either, I don't think.
No. So we've got some work to do to get back to this, but I guess we're changing directions then, saying we're going to shoot for the full meal deal, knowing that it's, we're going to provide the minimum of services between now and January and in January, I mean, we're going to be trying to staff up for the full meal thing.
We're going to do what.
Or take whatever we can get.
We're capable of doing that the funding provides.
So the other is.
Highest level of service that we have funding provided and that we can, and humans.
And so I guess the next big thing is, is, you know, if we were doing and planning on the small thing, we can put them in one spot. If you're talking about 13 positions, where are we going to put these people?
I, I mean, I think with this timeline, you're going to need, like, there's going to be some pretty big asks and it's not going to just be me asking you all to sign off on an org chart, right? There's going to be a lot of other departments that are going to have to help support this as well, especially three months is a pretty short timeline.
If they were going to be two, three years to scale up, you just said through three months, scale up to the full meal deal.
Well, I'm saying, you know, to hire the 13 people, it might take two or three years to find the people to fill all the positions. But.
Right. Create the, we're going to create the chart as far as what.
But our bigger issue right now is, is that if we're saying yes, even to the small part, we have to put them somewhere. Where are we going to put these people?
Well, if you're going to authorize 13 positions and you have to have a place that will hold 13 positions, old road department building, so in place you got to be able to elevate half of that, other options. But if you're going to try and stack to 13, you got to have a place to put them from kick up.
Can behavioral health, can, or can Beacon pay rent?
They, so when they put their.
I see the overhead.
So they put the overhead in there, so that should, and I think there's a rental line on there if I remember.
So they can rent the, they can rent the building. Us, AK, the road fund or the whoever.
With us. With Juvenal pulled out of there over here, do you know that?
Are we charging Juvenal?
Yeah, as far as the remodels going on now.
It's kind of a trade because we know public folks are going to be doing this and it's a juvenile.
Right.
Right, it's a wash.
Well, it's a wash on their side.
It's all our money.
Well, yeah.
It's an enterprise one.
Yeah, what's it? Yes.
Um, so if we need to go that route, I need an org chart like yesterday. So how do you want me to put, I mean, I know how to put one together. Can you all review that next Tuesday?
Well, I guess that kind of brings up the next thing. I understand the org chart that they're kind of out there. But I would imagine whatever manager supervisor, whatever we hire, they want to dabble in here and play with it.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a draft.
Yeah, but, but we, I have to submit that with a lot of the documentation, I have to.
So I would, I would say.
It takes three initials to change.
We need to get this in front of the state as soon as possible. Um, my direction would be to have you and Rob come up with an org, org chart that will provide for the future, not, you know, and maybe you can put phase one, phase two, and we can send that into the BH, with the BHA application saying, this is our process for phasing up, knowing that, you know, these are going to be the positions plus the other position. And then we send it all to them because, you know, we put in for everything on, on our application. So that would be my idea and what you come up with is what we're going to take and we get it to them later this week.
Can you sign off on it on Thursday? Can I come back on Thursday? You're not on Thursday? Okay, next Tuesday.
I mean.
We just authorized the chair today to sign?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
And we don't have to, have to be.
Oh, I don't, that's up to you all. I don't.
I mean, we're not going to make changes when it comes in front of us. So if we say, yeah, we've, we've reviewed the preliminary.
If you need it sooner than next Tuesday.
I mean, it'd be ideal.
So their chart won't be pretty by then because we're going to process the getting new software and so we're, they have to be.
We don't need pretty, we're utilitarian around here.
That's right.
The boxes.
Do you see the three of us sitting up here? There's no pretty.
I have 96 colors. All right, we're set then.
Hey, do we need to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I think that'd be the best as far as.
Mr. Christopher, are you okay with this?
Again, it's draft, again, it takes, it takes two, it takes two.
No, it's fine because we can change it the week after if we chose to. So it's irrelevant. It's not like.
We just have something to submit. Right.
It's like close enough. It's like, yes.
We're on a timeframe, so yeah, I would, I would authorize. I have no problem with it.
Okay. So Mr..
So Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to authorize the creation and submission of the org chart for the new behavioral health, county behavioral health organization, I guess. And I guess authorize that, do you want to just, authorize the chair's signature on the draft?
I would second that very lengthy motion.
Motion second and discussion.
Long enough. What else did I leave out?
She asked the question, is that, is that department going to have its own director or manager as a box? I mean, we have to get it as opposed to.
Yes.
Well, and I would assume by next Tuesday, she's going to have an ask here to fill that box.
I don't know if we can move that fast, but we'll try.
I mean, we already, so we already have a contract contractor in place that's pretty much acting as, as a lot of those pieces. Who is also, you know, can fill that role as the, what it was, what is that called? The?
Clinical supervisor.
Clinical supervisor.
We have that filled till January.
Yeah, I would just like to have, I would like to have that manager director on staff as soon as possible because what's going to happen? If they're hired on at the end is they're going to come in and it's going to be set up differently than they would have wanted. And they're going to do some house cleaning to make it happen. Um, so I would like for them to get in as early on the ground floor as possible.
I think the size of that to be approved would be a week from next Tuesday.
That's fine, that's fine.
I mean, I want, I want the contract signed with Beacon before we start that hiring.
I think it would be worth our while to look at that contract and maybe discuss it before you all make that decision as well.
But right now, we need the BHA submitted to the state and get that. Otherwise, we can't provide services come up. I mean, that's number one. I don't care how many crayons you have to use.
Um, I, I would again caution that I am very concerned about the, the November 6 deadline and the fact that we're working with the state healthcare authority and the Department of Health to get that application approved. And I'm just concerned that it might not be a reality that they have that approved by that timeline, even though we've called in favors. There's a lot of bureaucracy that's happening. Crazy.
I have motion and second and a lot of conversation.
That was discussion. We're still discussing. Are you done with discussing? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? It's kind of an important thing. Creating a multimillion dollar addition to the budget.
I think somebody would want to come in and, like, he gets to set up a new department. How often does that happen?
The director job is going to have people applying and other stuff, I don't know.
Make sure that director position also is that.
I just thought Rob would do it. Duties aside.
Oh no. Now I'm in a lot of trouble.
You might want to run before, while you're, while you're ahead.
I just lost all my points.
I'm gonna need the service.
All right, thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, Rob. Next up, we have the sheriff's office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just trying to fix all the problems, all the world's problems. Yeah, they make a lot of money. You look at those rates?
Yeah. I look at the rates.
And you can go as fast as you want, because we've already read it.
Then we'll speed through this.
Let's do it.
Uh, number one, there were a total of three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven calls for service from January first, twenty twenty-two, to September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of two hundred and twenty-two civil papers during the same time period. Deputy, and number two, Deputy Adam Diamond is the new canine handler for profi. He are, we are working on getting Diamond and profi through the Canine Academy with code four canine and an estimated cost of sixty-five hundred dollars plus lodging in November of this year. Number three, sheriff's office attended the Trout Lake Parade and Fair. The event was well attended and everyone appeared to be having a great time. Number four, posse, the posse members were requested by the county fair board to assist them with the events at the county fair. The county fair was a great success and a large attendance. It appeared everyone was having a great time. Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ealing did an outstanding job in representing the sheriff's office at the sheriff's booth during the event. On September third, twenty-two, we attended the Bickleton County Community Days Car Show. There was a good attendance and the people at the event, everyone appeared to be having a great time. Number six, the sheriff's office was part of the Huckleberry Festival on September ninth, tenth, and eleventh, there were, there was a great attendance of people at the festival, and again, Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ealing did an outstanding job representing the sheriff's office at the sheriff's booth during the event. On Saturday, September tenth, the sheriff's office took part in the Huckleberry Festival Parade in downtown Benning, and everyone had a great time. Number seven, jail, Chief Jail Administrator Carmen Nobbs will be giving an update to the board on her area of responsibility in managing jail operations and also reporting on patrol division activities. Number eight, Chief Civil Deputy Ealing will be giving an update to the board on her area of responsibility managing the sheriff's office budget and her other administrative duties.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On September seventeenth, we received the resignation of Corporal Donnie Bellamy. Corporal Bellamy has been with KCSO since twenty eleven, and he is a valuable member of the Corrections Division. He is pursuing his career goals and has accepted a position with Wasco County probation. We were surely missing, but support him in his new venture. While I knew that Donnie has looked at going to a probationary position, I really wasn't, really didn't want it to happen now. We're already understaffed and, but he completed his degree this year and has worked really hard in order to meet his career goals, so we wanna wish him well. They will be well-served over there for Wasco County with him leaving over there. Corrections Deputy Emmett Vincent, he will attend the Corrections Academy with a start date of September twenty-seventh. He will follow that with an FTO program after his ten weeks at the academy. We had a second corrections deputy that was also scheduled to attend to attend the same academy. Unfortunately, he did not meet the requirements to further his employment and he did not meet probationary requirements, so Chris Hamlock's last day was on September seventh. It's never easy to let an employee go, but it's also important to recognize when they're not meeting the minimum duties required, so it's a tough decision in an already short staff, but it was definitely the right one to do. Corporal Walter is currently at the end of his FMLA and he will return to work on October third. Corrections Deputy Valosteros has given notice that he will be going on his FMLA beginning October eighteenth and possibly sooner if necessary, because we can't determine when babies wanna join the world, so it could happen sooner. With the exit of Corporal Bellamy, Sadejas, and Hamlock, that leaves three openings to be filled. We have requested an additional civil service test for lateral and entry-level positions. Those are now listed on the county's website, and currently Detective Neera is conducting a background investigation to fill one of those positions. We also requested through civil service to update our control board operator list, so that is, you'll find that also on the employment list. Sergeant Gillum and I will review the schedule and will fill the empty shifts with overtime, posse, and reserves. Their upcoming bid vacation scheduled for the next three months, the open spot created by Vincent attending the academy and the FMLA that are currently on leave, along with the vacant positions, will be challenging to say the least. I'm pretty sure that I gave my sergeant additional gray hair when we announced that Corporal Bellamy had resigned. We have requested additional service, the civil service exams, so the control board operator, one reason we're doing that is we, the test, the list for that expired in June, those tests are only good for, following the test, that list is only good for one year, so we wanna make sure we're current on all of those. Training on September fifteenth, Corporal Cooper taught a defensive tactics training for three of the corrections deputies. This is the first in the series of training conducted by Corporal Cooper, and he's also putting together a defensive tactics class for patrol, and he has conducted several defensive tactics classes for the reserves. He is certified through CJTC, and all of his trainings, before we're allowed to have a training, all of those are reviewed and approved by CJTC. On September twenty-ninth, we'll be hosting a fingerprinting class taught by Washington State Patrol. This does not cost the county anything to host this training, it is something offered by WSP. So right now, I know I have got at least one road sergeant interested in going to this training. It's important because these guys are the ones who are also whipping prints and possibly utilizing the system if they need to. So we're gonna cover both electronic fingerprinting as well as going over rolled ink prints.
When do you, if I, I'm just kinda curious, when do you use one versus the other, or?
Especially when it comes to employment fingerprints, so if employers require prints, oftentimes they send a card and then that's a rolled ink print. We're trying to get all the schools to go to an electronic version, it's actually cheaper that way, and it's a quick response.
Yes, so right now, White Salmon Valley School District does ink.
Right.
Whereas Golden Dale.
Does electronic. So it's really the agency's call.
And so there's a six-week lag time when you do ink.
Right.
And I have usually a twenty-four to forty-eight hour return time on submitting electronically.
Okay.
And we know quickly if those prints we submitted failed or not.
Which is not a.
Correct.
Because we do.
There's a failure rate with the ink ones, that's right.
Right, and so we do electronic ones for all of our concealed weapons permits, all of that process is all done electronically.
Sex offenders.
Sex offenders, all of that is done electronically.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the courts, you know, they continue to just be busier and busier as summer has hit, there's been so many calls, I guess, that generate more criminals coming into the courtroom, so Superior in East and West, they provide us dockets on a daily basis, continued, most days are dual docket days, Superior Court in East continuing to do that. It does get challenging, but we're managing, without the posse, we would not be able to provide any courtroom security. They are instrumental in this, as they're there today, they're there all week this week. Fortunately, our trials this week were canceled in Superior Court, but they will resume next month. We've done regular just inmate transports this month to Yakima Norcore so far, we'll anticipate we'll probably be doing one more. Medical and mental health, there have been several visits to KVH to meet the medical and needs of the inmates. We had one inmate who was taken to the emergency room three days in a row. We have utilized a posse and corrections deputies for these inmates who required secure transport. This morning, I had an inmate who was scheduled for a medical visit, brought in a posse member because I didn't have any spare corrections staff to do that, unfortunately, the inmate refused a medical visit, so that didn't happen, but at least we had that availability of a posse member to do that for us. We were asked to assist in transferring a person on a mental health hold. It was a civil hold, they required transportation to a mental hospital that was more than twelve hours away. This person was not in custody, however, law enforcement has had numerous contacts with the person, and clearly assisting the transport was the right thing to do. It should be noted that we utilized a reserve deputy to drive the patient. We will not always be able to facilitate these arrangements, but we feel this transfer was in the best interest of the patient and the community in which they reside. I'd also like to note that the ER Director Erin also went on that trip, and she was able to provide medical care if that was necessary on that trip. It was a very long day, they were gone nearly thirteen hours on that day. I did not post a deputy at the hospital to stay with her, she was housed overnight, but because she was not in custody, that was not my responsibility, but we figured, I really did feel that getting this person to a hospital was really detrimental. It was gonna prevent us from sending deputies to a residence five times for calls, because that's what, that's what would happen. We've had dealt with her many, many times, so it's better to get them the help they need than sending a deputy out five times on something that we can't control, so. We were lucky that this facility allowed us to come in a patrol car. Most facilities, their policy is they can only arrive by ambulance, and obviously, we don't own an ambulance. Unless we could put some stripes real quick on Nellie, maybe that would work, I don't know, so maybe that's an option. We had one crisis in the jail that resulted in inmate being transferred to a facility that was about three hours away. The inmate has since returned from the facility and remains under the watchful eye of Corrections. We had another crisis yesterday. Luckily, I have very watchful staff and we have a camera system because that was supposed to save that person's life. That person is, remains in our crisis cell. There was communication through dispatch and through the new crisis line with that person. The inmate population is trending toward more complex and concerning medical cases that are requiring these multiple trips to the emergency room and follow-up appointments. Concerns me that the liability for these inmates is increasing, however, it is important that they remain in custody due to the nature of their charges. I believe that we will see some increased medical costs during the next three months that cannot be avoided. Currently, I have one housed in a DOC facility, and I will be working on another transfer today. It's in the best interest of somebody's medical, it reduces our liability when they have twenty-four hour care available. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our behind-the-scenes employees who are also instrumental in our daily operations. This includes Susie Messer, our criminal record specialist, and our two control board operators, Jennifer Minor and Danielle Goodman. Susie has worked for KCSO since May of two thousand and one. She assists the jails in many ways, including processing all of the jail records, from filing to gathering documents for public records requests. She is also involved in the hiring process for appointments for polygraph and psychological evaluations. She's also responsible for all the bail money transactions to each court, along with processing all jail money received through the banker program used for commissary money that's taken at intake and bail money. Susie is also the expert in ordering our uniforms and duty gear for all of the divisions and is always looking for the best deals. We rely on Susie every day and are grateful to have her as a dedicated employee. She also works at the West End when she's asked to, so she has a very big role in the behind-the-scenes functions of the sheriff's office. Jennifer Minor joined KCSO in twenty nineteen and Danielle joined KCSO in twenty twenty-one. The role of the control board operator goes beyond just opening and closing doors. They're responsible for answering calls, processing court documents, picking up prescriptions for inmates, and filing both criminal and medical files, and they both do an outstanding job, and each day is filled with new challenges. The last few days, we've had control board challenges. Yesterday, the sound part of the control board stopped working, so we've had, we're working on getting that resolved today. So the jail's been extremely busy, right now, we only have eighteen inmates, but those are all high maintenance inmates, they're, each one has some need that seems to outshine the other. We have two that are awaiting transport to Eastern, we're just waiting on a bed date for that, so that will be another transport. I'm crossing my fingers that that, that they both get beds at the same time so that we can just make one transport, because we're trying to be mindful of the cost of fuel, however, I don't see that that will happen, so. Do you have any questions on the jail?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. So moving on to patrol, I'll read off the press release. On Thursday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office responded to the area of Pump House Road in Golden Dale, Washington. Sergeant Eric Anderson, Sergeant Fred Killian, Detective Tim Neer, and Deputy Adam Diamond arrested thirty-year-old David J. Whitworth on an Oregon State parole board warrant for violating his parole. Following his arrest, the City of the Dows Police Detectives and the Wasco County District Attorney provided the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office with an additional warrant for David J. Whitworth, who is suspected of shooting a male in the Dows, Oregon, on September ninth, twenty twenty-two. The City of Golden Dale Police Department and the Clicktack County Prosecutor's Office subsequently charged David J. Wentworth with local charges following burglary within the city limits of Golden Dale. That burglary occurred on August thirtieth, and we, City of Golden Dale had already arrested one suspect in that case, and that was Andrea Sampson. David J. Whitworth was booked into the Clicktack County Jail on the following charges. State of Oregon Board of Parole, he had a parole violation absconding on supervision for robbery three and firearms felony possession. It's a no-bail warrant. Wasco County warrant, attempted murder, class A felony, assault one with serious injury with weapon, class A felony, assault two weapon, class B felony, assault two weapon indifference, class B felony, unlawful use weapon with intent to use, class C felony, unlawful use weapon discharge, class C felony, felon possession of a firearm, class C felony. That warrant is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar bail. The City of Golden Dale and the Clicktack County Prosecutor's Office prosecutor filed information and charged Mr. Whitworth with residential burglary, class B felony. The City of Golden Dale also submitted for theft of a firearm, class B felony, five counts that were not filed by the Prosecutor's Office. They also file, did not file on a theft second-degree, class C felony, that Golden Dale booked him on. David J. Whitworth was seen in court on September sixteenth, and bail was set for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on his charges in Clicktack County. So he currently is residing in our facility, he does have a very violent background, and right now, we'll, we'll see how things go with that. Clicktack County Sheriff's Office will continue working with the City of the Dows and the City of Golden Dale on each of these investigations, and please contact the agency directly if you have any information on these cases.
In in Washington, all he was charged with was residential burglary, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bail.
Correct.
But then he has a. But then he has attempted murder, assault, and unlawful weapon in use, and that's only $500,000. Seems like, the attempted burglary seems quite a bit lower than the rest of it.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not the judges that set bail, because that's set at a no bail.
But we can be thankful. If that was Chicago or someplace, they'd be out already.
And I have to say that our sergeants and our deputies and everybody who was involved in taking Mr. Whitworth into custody, you know, there's always a potential for violence when you're taking in a subject who was known to be, suspected to be in a shooter in a very violent situation that happened in the DOWS, and we took him into custody without incident. So I am thankful for that.
Is he from the DOWS or Goldendale?
He does not have any ties to Goldendale that I know of, other than he was with a local person in that residential burglary.
So who's prisoner is, as far as, who's paying for it?
He's ours.
Okay.
He's held on local charges, so he's ours.
I would assume he would end up getting sentenced in Golden, and then be doing his local time, Washington time, and then have to get extradited to Oregon to do his Oregon time.
That's pretty typically what would happen is, yes, he would be, he'll go through the court process here if he is, goes to trial, or he pleads out and he's found guilty, gets prison time. And then what happens is there's an interstate agreement between the states, and they loan him over. In other news for patrol, from September 1st through this morning, there had been 601 calls to dispatch. Of those 601 calls, 279 were for Clicktack County Sheriff's Office.
Can we get back?
Yes, yeah, this, this is just ones that are directly assigned. So in those range from citizen assessments to threatening, 911 hangups, MBCs, non-injury, MBCs, injury, suicidals, couple animal wildlife calls. I do know that there was a bear that was shot out of a tree in Bickleton the other day. He was in a guy's yard right next to a camp trailer that had people in it. We have had a number of psychiatric calls, suicide calls. One of our calls that started out as a welfare check, I believe, went to a psychiatric call. Juvenile's causing problems, trespassing, failed to register, that would be a failed to register on a sex offender, and motor vehicle thefts. So we're getting a, quite a variety of calls. Domestics. They're keeping very busy. There was a domestic last night at 10 o'clock, so. The patrol guys are really, really busy right now. They're also, you know, running short. We're in the final phases of hiring a lateral. We have one more hurdle to jump on that, and then that person should be hired, I'm anticipating, by having her onboard by the middle of October, so that they can give their two weeks' notice. So. There's some other questions?
Good morning. Well, budget-wise, we are still holding our own and haven't had to come and ask you for money, knock on wood. And you've reviewed our budgets and everything. Do you have any questions on those? I won't go into many details unless you have specific questions.
On next year's budget?
This year's.
This year's budget? You mean, you guys haven't come back asking for a supplemental like other people?
I will be.
Patrol, I noticed patrol, that, and you.
Patrol's been hit hard.
Yeah, I was curious what's.
Overtime.
Just overtime.
Overtime. And then we had the body worn camera expenditure, which we had not planned on.
That was charged to the patrol division?
Yes, yeah. And so it will appear for the first time in budget in the 2023 budget. And then I'll be meeting with KVH to iron out some of the medical bills that Carmen keeps mentioning, because we are directing them to bill specific entities. So if it's not ours, we don't want to see the bills for a number of reasons, HIPAA being one of them, so. And so that's what I have on budget. Did you have a question about next year's budget?
With only 29% remaining, are you thinking you're going to need a supplemental by the end?
I am maybe moving things up and down within, is where we're looking. We're looking, I'm pulling the budget in Kianta on an every-other-day basis, looking as I enter data, and then I evaluate it by the bills that come in, and then I meet with Carmen and Bob and say, here's where we are, as they sign off on things. That's kind of the methodology that we'll be using to the end of the year, so we'll know exactly before we even submit something what the effect will be. And so we're tightening our waistline, so to speak.
We will try not to have some of that.
That, that's the goal. And we are instituting as many department practice saving devices as possible, cutting down on printers that eat up a lot of laser jet ink that are color printers that, we've got our Canon copiers now that are colored that don't cost as much, so we're reducing use that way. We're also having Rob look at scan drive versus just direct-to-the-Cannon email, because I'm noticing some storage, and that does cost according to IT, so we've got some, we're looking at that. So we're looking at all the little different mechanisms, and what does this cost? And if it costs, I want to know why, and how we can make it not cost. So we are trying to be as efficient as possible. And then, just so that you're aware, you hear us talk about concealed pistol licenses a lot, so I tossed in just from January 1 to now, how many concealed pistol licenses we've issued. So 291 original, and 288 renewals, and 25 late fees. So those late fees, we get half of the late fee. So we're trying to encourage. So those community events that I attend, I am handing out more and more concealed pistol license applications and accepting more renewal at those community events. People can do those types of activities there with me because I don't have to do fingerprints. So trying to get out to the communities and take care of business that normally they would have to come into one of our offices. So make ourselves aware and handle their business at those community events. Speaking of handling the business, Sendejas and the code compliance, if he plans his posters and any educational activity for next year's events, he is more than welcome to put them in our tent. Planted ahead of time. It was very successful to have, especially at the fair, GPD had their information in our booth, and it was great to share and be able to talk to any of the citizens about any question law enforcement-related, whether it was police, or code compliance, or sheriff's office-related, you know, anyone who had a question, we were able to answer their questions and be there for just any activity that they needed. At Huck Fest, I was able to have my booth right next door to the school district, so we had lots of conversations about getting them onto electronic fingerprints and being able to increase their waiting period for, or reduce their waiting period for their fingerprints. So it was a great opportunity to connect with them during Huck Fest. And I included this month's training as an attachment. I'm not going to read it to you, because you guys can read it yourself, but it's a rural community crime prevention. And I, in all of the different divisions, I've asked the people, do you know that Clicktack County is a rural county? And it's amazing how many people are not aware that we are rural. And I know, I know, especially on the West End.
Starbucks.
Yeah, it's amazing. Even on white salmon, they're like, well, no, we're a city. We're, I'm like, so the basic education about what is rural, what is urban, what is a city, what is not a city, what is incorporated, and then how to protect their property. So that has been my mantra this last month, and how to protect your property. And so that's what I'm going to be pushing from now till Christmas, only because we have porch pirates, we have mail theft, and we're trying to get the message out to lock your stuff up! And then finally, I know you guys, I know you guys are really excited about this, but Motorola Solutions is here in our building, and we have the body worn cameras charging as we speak, and we are hooking them up to all three of our sergeants, and in their vehicles, they will be our test pilots. And once we perfect that phase, and they know how to use all the intricacies, we'll be doing the train-the-trainer program with them, then they, and we, and we have all the kinks worked out, then we'll move about to all of the rest of the trips as we get all the vehicles hooked up, so.
How long do you think that implementation's going to take?
Probably the next month and a half, yeah, so.
That is, that is, because Motorola gives around to it, but.
Well, no, Motorola, so Day Wireless will be responsible for rewiring the cars, but because we already have the Motorola WatchGuard system, we're not pulling all of the wires out and then rewiring. We're utilizing a lot of the same wiring, so it's, yeah. So, but we've done the three Tahos that the sergeants drive right now, and we're, but we're learning the kinks. And then Curtis has been a rock star over in IT, and he's getting all of the redaction software and all, everything set up so that everything will be moving smoothly. And the WatchGuard Motorola gentleman that's sitting in the office over there said that we have been doing a great job. This is the most organized he's walked into in a long time, so our county is doing well, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Have a great day.
Have a great day.
Oh, actually, before you, before you leave, just a sheriff, and I know public work, we changed the speed limits out on Middle Road and stuff, and so I had asked Gordy that, and they had consulted with you on that.
Absolutely. And Riggers is aware of it.
Okay.
We'll be working on it.
Good. Thank you.
Canine Castle. Public Works is working to retrieve the canine castle.
Gavin Marble.
From Gavin Marble's property.
Oh, I thought we did that already.
Trying to.
Well, they didn't have a home for it.
We have a home for it, and we are attempting to remove it off the property.
I'm guessing there's more to that story.
Well, if it's existing on the part of Gavin, I'll send him a letter saying it's county property, and he's put on notice if he refuses. It's stolen property.
Is he refusing?
No, no, not at this point.
Okay.
But we're getting the feeling that not answering phone calls and returning phone calls.
Oh.
It's.
All right.
But the.
But I'll guarantee you, we'll take care of it.
But the mechanism, rather than disbanding it, Public Works is probably just going to put eight to 10 guys out there, and they're just going to lift it up and carry it out.
Is everything all right with Profi? We saw in the bills that he had a chiropractic appointment.
He is doing great. We have, we actually took him to Mary Ann. They did a full scan and blood work and everything. Is a little bit of arthritis in his back, but he is, he is perfect in all other ways, just normal German Shepherd arthritis, just because like some of us.
My back hurts too.
And, but he is healthy, good to go. He's great for work.
And in the reason we did that, Gavin had talked to two of the vets over in Oregon that he'd been dealing with, and two of them, apparently very short time as veterinarians, in their opinion, this would be too traumatic for the dog to go to a new handler. And there was some smoke being blown. Therefore, with that, we had Mary Ann do the check, so we have a document showing that dog is healthy.
So Gavin took the dog over himself on his own time to these vets?
No, no, in the past.
Oh, in the past.
But he went there when he no longer was going to have the dog, and he tried to get them to convince us that he should retire the dog to Gavin.
Oh, okay.
And we had Vancouver canine people come up who do this full-time, and they said, it happens all the time. They take dogs and transfer them to different trainers and everything else. So there's not an issue there, but, you know, and I can understand why Gavin, build that bond, and hard for him to give it up.
Yeah, we all get attached to our pups.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know, keep an eye on it if you want to. Probably chewing up my shoes right now.
He's still a pup. All right, come on forward.
So we went through, you guys, your own copy, your area notes on the [inaudible].
Okay, thank you.
You know, for us, you're looking at a combined budget, it's not an individual budget. So the presentation is of the.
Not this or this.
It's this. So that is a very different conversation, and I wanted to make sure that you, and thank you Commissioner Anderson for asking my DC.
That's why.
That's.
We need more crayons.
Yeah, we, we get the crayons out.
It's not even in color. We ran out of ink.
To be fair, Casey suggested that I color print it for you all, and I said you'd be fine with black and white, so I apologize. I was wrong.
It was just, it was a crayon joke.
Everybody and I appreciate it. So in terms of facilities, you're looking at, well, there may be some crossover.
Twenty people.
Like 20 positions.
Four million bucks.
So I, I think, yeah, so.
It's over there, it's not, not over there anymore, it's over there.
So it would be three.
How is this state and Beacon, they're going to, you know, staff up four million bucks and keep that going without.
I think Aaron's going to talk to Gordy because there may be some.
Set up a full clinic, they're going to need exam rooms and.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know, you know, in each line item of the budget, so both pages have like a supply budget. I don't know if there's crossover between those or not, so I'll get some clarification on that. Obviously, the wages are different, but then, you know, you look at all of the other numbers that, that might be.
So it's not seven or 13 bodies.
So is this kind of, did they sort of contemplate, you know, this, the seven is the sort of stripped-down startup, and then add, this is a component that you add?
Yes.
I knew I went into the wrong job. Psychiatrist, $412,000.
Do more right now.
All right, well, does anybody have anything to say?
I see it, I see the need, but it's just, I mean, I kind of like law and justice, I guess. I would say there's a very small percentage of the population that uses the majority of the tax dollars.
Yep. I remember the originals had like a transport driver slash health worker.
Yes.
Is that, that got pulled off of this now? Is that, that got pulled off of this now?
And we're up to 21.
I said one, not three.
Empire after you need for any money.
That's the rule.
I, I think that we would be.
Permission to come back and ask for landfill bucks next year and a year after. Because the new one does not.
I'm thinking not next year, the year after. But I, I think that we would be, I think that the expectation should be that at some point they're going to ask for money. I, I think, well, it might be mostly self sustaining. I don't think most services of that nature are. That's not how healthcare works. And I'm.
Well, I mean, how does comprehensive mental health? They don't have taxing authority or anything. They have to be self sustaining. In fact, it's, by all rights, it sounds like they're building up a pretty healthy reserve right now.
That's the problem is they, they pay for seven of these areas and provide one. I don't know that we're going to be able to.
During their presentation, they talked about how they, they also can move money to their other, like Walla Walla, some of their other places they can.
Right.
Allocate the funds. This department won't be able to do that.
And I, I mean, it's something we can definitely think about. And I think we could just move forward with our draft org chart just because that needs done for the behavioral health application. Um, I, I think we.
We need three crisis sub P's. Yeah.
Remember, that's the first year, right? Four million is the first year.
Right.
Everybody out there is going to get a raise. Some second.
Authorized.
Ain't that the truth?
Authorized the paycheck.
And the county employees and the county system.
We've had that, that conversation expectation from the startup thing and saying, you know, because first we might come on as a vendor for a while before we become them. So, yep, all right. Is there anything else? Questions? Thank you for the lovely news.
All right.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recess for lunch back at one o'clock.
Motion to second to recess. Thank you to everyone who is online and listening in. We will see you all at one. Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners back to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the business agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
I don't believe we have any minutes.
We have no minutes for approval today, so we are going to move right into citizen comment. We will do it as we have been doing. Comments will be limited for, to three minutes per individual. And the county commissioners will respond after everyone has had a chance to speak. We will begin as always. First goes to in the room. If anybody would like to provide public comment. All right, we will go online for public comment. I know we still have people still joining. If you would like to provide public comment, star six to unmute yourself if you are on the phone. Raise your hand or turn your video camera on. And we would be excited to hear from you today. Everybody's excited to speak. If you would like to provide public comment, star six, raise your hand, turn your video camera on, get our attention. If not, we have things to do here.
Was it Bill was from the battles?
Oh. Wow, that's a long time. I thought if we already could do online subject treatment stuff. Man, I figured with everybody getting their assessments, there'd be all sorts of public comment. Gentlemen, would either of you like to provide public comment? I knew somebody had to start it off.
I don't want to clarify this stuff that isn't on the public hearing.
I'm sure he knows that.
I'm not going to speak about public hearing. I'd encourage everybody to go donate blood today over at the American Legion. They're doing that right now. I have an appointment, but they'll take you if you're walking. That's my comment.
That's it? All right. Do you want to trade spots and I can go donate some blood? All right, we are back online. If anybody would like, Joe, would you like to provide public comment? Is, oh, did you mute Joe? Okay, 7211.
This is Greg Wagner with C. Mr. Sauter, Mr. Christopher, what is the status of my code complaint for the unpermitted short term rentals being operated by Jacob Anderson? I sent you a copy of the email from the code compliance officer when he told me that he had a conflict of interest and couldn't investigate Mr. Anderson. Is there still a code compliance officer conflict of interest? What is the process moving forward? When will this code complaint be investigated? Our county is a complaint driven county. A citizen must file a complaint, a code complaint, to initiate an investigation. Last week, Mr. Christopher said we must now go after all the other short term rentals. This is not true. The other short term rentals, any of those would have to have a complaint filed against them for any investigation or action to be taken against them. For you commissioners to know about five or 600 unpermitted short term rentals in our county and not address this issue is negligence. Should a guest at one of these unpermitted short term rentals be killed, their loved ones will sue our county. And due to your negligence allowing the unpermitted short term rentals, they will be rewarded possibly millions of dollars. How much longer will you ignore this problem? Mr. Anderson, last week you quoted from ordinance 7178-2. It's section 310-2, number 11. But you conveniently only quoted the part you wanted to quote. The full quote is, sentence is, "The principal unit nor the ADU shall be used as a short term rental." So according to our county code, you aren't even allowed to use your primary residence as a short term rental. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment in the room? Or online?
Good afternoon. I have a question about the minutes in the agenda for the commissioners meeting. In the full packet that was sent out for today's meeting, there was some additional information from the Health Department. But a couple of other people, the sheriff's office and somebody who I didn't recognize just before the lunch break, walked up to the commissioners and handed in documents which had information relevant to what they were talking about. Those don't seem to appear in the minutes. I'm wondering how members of the public can get copies of the documents that are presented at the meeting but not included either in the agenda or the minutes. So that's question number one. Question number two is this. I, I'm told I don't attend all your meetings, you know, obviously. I get to, I get here when I can. But apparently, at a meeting back in August, there was a, a statement, I don't know by who, one of the commissioners, about the policy on complaints. And so friends of White Salmon has filed a complaint on a shoreline, what we think is a shoreline violation. And I've heard nothing from your compliance officer. And apparently, there was a statement made that at least this kind of complaint, I don't know what kind of complaints, have to have two complaint, complainants before something will be investigated. And I'd like to know where that is in the code or in the policy, you know? And I'd like to know what that applies to. Is it complaints about certain ordinances? Is it, you know, when are two required and under what policy and guidance? And then the words that were used were neighbors. And I don't, apparently in the meeting, and I don't know what that means. This has to be somebody right next to door. Or, you know, can, can somebody not report a complaint about something that's not close to them? So I would like some clarification on, on that policy about which complaints will be investigated and what the rules are. And I would like to know where I find that in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Okay, we're back in the room. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? I'm not seeing anyone back online. Star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your camera on.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I thought I'd stay in line with the, the rest of the questions about code compliance complaints. And last week, there was a discussion during your public comment period regarding Jake Anderson's two code, code compliance complaints. I'd like to make that clear. There have been two official code complaints filed for Mr. Anderson's Airbnb at 58 Anderson Street, where the party withheld. And last week, Commissioner Sauter and Christopher both replied to my question of what's the process? What, what happens next with this code compliant after the other complaint received a response back from the code compliance officer that he would not be handling this case due to conflict of interest? Both Commissioners Sauter and Christopher replied to my question as the process that the code complaint would be handled just like any other person. Yet my complaint has yet to be responded to. And the code, the code officer has stopped communication with the other complaint. And so Commissioner Christopher, you, last week you said that you agreed that everybody must play by the same rules. And this is, as Mr. Wagner said, this is a county code compliance driven county and a, or complaint driven county. I've been told that many times. Last week, you tried to misinform people saying, you know, you're just allowing this to happen. It's just the way it goes. And every, that's just how all the short term rentals are going right now. You know, there's just, you know, nothing being, nothing being enforced. When I asked the planning department how I go about making my preliminary resident, my primary residence into a short term rental, I was told that I needed to obtain a conditional use permit. There you go. There's your answer. That's the rules that everybody must play by. If those were the rules handed to me, those are the county rules. And I'd be happy to forward you the email from the county planning director that says exactly that and instructs me how to go about it. And I would have fees to pay and things to go through. And Commissioner Anderson, I like to agree that last week when you were telling the people the only place you can find anything on the books. Let me see, basically, you told the people that the only place you find something on the books referring, referring to short term rentals is in the ADU section. You went on to tell people that as long as you are in a house that is a permanent structure, that is still a fit, single family dwelling. Whether you rent your house for one night or three months, it's still a single family dwelling. And the, and the code is not clear anyway. That is what you inform people. And the code says neither the principal unit, the principal unit nor the ADU shall be used as a short term rental, a short term rent, a short term vacation rental, which is less than 60 consecutive days in a single month period. So maybe you should be reading your ordinances, zoning ordinance number 62678. And that's what it says. Neither the principal unit nor the ADU in a 60 consecutive day in a single 12 month period. That is what Clicktack County zoning ordinance, section 3.102, parentheses 11 says. Thank you. And how is my case going to be handled? Either Sauter or Christopher can handle, can let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. All right, is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on. I am not seeing anyone. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Would either of my seatmates like to respond to anyone who provided public comment?
So I do have a response for Ms. Arnold. The papers that were handed to us were, provided copies from Beacon Health about the mental health situation we were discussing. The reason why they were not in the packet is in order to get in the packet, people have to submit their items by Thursday of the previous week. So if there's something that needed to be updated, it ends up not being in the packet. Just like our Public Works update every morning is not in the packet. That is a document that we are handed because it is new and fresh and whatnot. So these, do you have a copy of these, Miss Lee? Okay, you do now. I, I just gave our clerk a copy of those two papers that we were handed. And I will have her shoot them off to you. So there's no reason to ask for a request unless you don't see them anytime soon. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would, I would follow up on that also, Pat, that the stuff from the sheriff is their brief that they go through. Anything that's handed to us is a, is a public record. It should go in the record and it's, it's just not available ahead of time because as Commissioner Christopher said, that you have to have the stuff in by Thursday the week before. And so we, you saw when we got it, that's when we got it. We generally, we always ask for copies for the commissioners and the clerk so that it gets included in the, in the record. And so if you want it, we can certainly, you can always get those. Those are public records.
Can I just say, I don't want the Beacon Health thing. I just was asking, in case in some meeting there is something, what is, what would be the process to write to your email?
Uh, yeah, although I, and I don't know how we've done it in the past as far as how we keep, because I know what we get, go, we keep it, we keep a copy of it as far as. But yeah, the easiest would be to just request it and then we can send it to you. But, because anything that. because anything that the commissioner gets is a public record and you have every right to see it. So just ask for it. To your question about the, Ms. Arnold, about the shoreline complaint, I think there is some confusion and I'm not going to speak, I think we need to look. I, I would refer all of us more to the planning department because we have, we inter, we intermix our terms between nuisance and code compliant, code cases when people file a complaint. And the rules are different, I believe, for both of them. When we talk about, you have to have two folks file a complaint. I believe that is for a nuisance complaint. You have to have two and they have to be in proximity. I think it's within five miles of where the alleged nuisance is to initiate an investigation. A code complaint, I believe, only takes a single complaint and you're, it does not have the geographical component of it. And they're in two different places in the code. And so again, people, I, I think we all do it where we flip back and forth and we're not, we're not using the same terminology. So as to your complaint about the shoreline, that would, I think if I'm recalling correctly, we had set a policy about were we going to investigate when we got a shoreline complaint that it was coming from an agency? Was that enough for us to initiate? And I believe we said it wasn't that we wanted some local component where the complaint is being generated in the county from somebody in the county, not just getting something. And that, that's a policy discussion or a decision as far as the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Wagner, back to Mr. Wagner's. I'm, I have to be careful because I will say when you asked your question last, last public comment, so a week ago, at that point, until you sent me a copy of the letter that had been sent to you. Number one, I didn't know you were the one that had filed the complaint because we generally are not informed of who is filing the complaint. And so once you sent it, then I got a, as far as a copy of the response from the code compliance officer. We had actually met with the code compliance officer that morning, Commissioner Christopher and actually all three of us. But Commissioner Christopher and I met with him, the two of us together, but it was during a executive session. So I have to be careful about what I can really say. Other than my comment that I made at one o'clock was based on the conversation that we had had that morning, which was there is no conflict of interest. That there is, if a complaint is filed against a commissioner or any, anybody, it is treated the same. There are, that's why there's three commissioners, not just one. And if there is a conflict with one of them, the, the, the past practice has been that commissioner is out of the, has nothing to do with it. And the other two commissioners will process that complaint without having, so there is no conflict of interest. So I stand by my statement at one ten of last week, which that again, I was unaware that that had been, that you had received a letter that said there was a conflict of interest. And because in my mind, there is no conflict of interest, that will be processed the same as anybody else. So that will, that will work its way through the process, just like anything else. Understanding that working its way through the process may be that again, there's been an allegation that's been made that has to be investigated and that will be, you know, quite out, that it may result in nothing. I'm not saying something's happening. I'm just saying the process will be followed. And that would be the same. Ms. Bosque, I would say if your earlier code complaint was filed during, it could have been during that time period. We had no code compliance officer for a period of time. Our current one is just getting up to speed. I couldn't comment on what happened with your earlier complaint, although I will be, as we discussed last week. Wait a minute, let, let me finish, sir, ma'am. Is that we have, again, let me, let me finish, that we have not prioritized enforcement of short-term rental alleged violations in Clickattack County since I've been on here. We made statements last week about there, we are, we believe there to be hundreds of violators. And we, that has not been something as a policy. We have said that is not a priority to investigate and enforce that. That goes back years and years and years. It is, it's not relevant to the current allegation complaint. It is a, it's a resource issue. If that's something that the board wants to change that as a priority and put more resources into investigating and am I convinced that there, I, I believe there are lots and lots and lots of folks that are doing short-term rentals that are, they are technically out of compliance with our code. And so, but it's a question of do we want to put our resources into doing that? I'll stop now.
Thank you, Commissioner Sodder. And for the record, what Commissioner Sodder was, was trying to say is this, during that executive session where anything was brought up about me, I was not in the room for clarifications purposes. Well, thank you both, Ms. Bosque and Mr. Wagner for saying that it was both of you who turned in code compliance violations against me. I enjoy our, our personal vendetta towards me. And that's totally fine. I would point out that when I was quoting the short-term rent, rental ordinance, you both just use the fact that neither the principal unit nor the ADU will be used for a short-term rental. The short-term rental ordinance or the, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is only applicable to, if you've applied for an accessory dwelling unit on your property. It is not applicable to everything else in the county. And if you were around when the accessory dwelling unit ordinance was passed, you would know that this was a, a, quite a bit of discussion during the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And part of that decision-making was the goal of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance was to provide people of modest means, the ability to affordably live in Clickattack County. It was not, and so that would be rentals for long-term for people who are, are working blue collar class. And that is why it was excluded from that. But if you don't have an accessory dwelling unit on your property, you're not, you're not part of that ordinance and you don't have to fall a part of that ordinance. And I would still stand by my statement that until an ordinance is passed that clearly defines what short-term rentals are, much like the City of White Salmon has done, much like Skamania County has done. So long as, as you're renting a legal house, so a permitted structure that has been through all the permitting, it is still, whether you want it for one day, one week, ninety days, sixty days, or an entire year, that is still a single-family dwelling, which is a permitted use. And Ms. Arnold, I would speak to you when it comes to the two complaints. If it is a code violation, it only takes one complaint. But to be specific, it's difficult for us. We get an update from the code compliance officer each month. But we don't know the exact people. We do not know the exact cases that is held or withheld from us. We are very cognizant and aware of if somebody would, would make the case that we are playing personal attacks against someone. So there's a reason we do not know who these people are. We also cannot see who makes complaints against us unless that person comes out and says that it's them that's doing it. So in, in your instance, if I asked Mr. Sendejas about the complaint that you filed against someone along the river, he can't tell me that because I can't know who filed the complaints. When we do speak with him next, I will ask if there's any environmental complaints and ask for an update on that. But that would be on all of the environmental issues because otherwise it's impossible for us to dig down into it. But I will do everything I can to try to get you an answer in a way that I legally can. And with that, we are going to close public comment and move into our regularly scheduled hearing. Thank you to everyone. Oh, Ms. Arnold. You're muted.
Am I muted? My question was only whether it requires two, two complainants to have the code compliance officer follow up on a complaint.
That is, that is only for nuisance cases. And so if that is a, you know, something against the Shorelines Management Act, which I'm guessing that it would be, then that would be a code violation.
I'll file, follow up with the code compliance officer. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a nice day. Okay, with that, we are going to move into our public meeting to consider the boundary approval or the approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-two dash zero five. Parcel number zero six, ten, two, six, five, seven, dash, zero, 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 four.
Sorry about that. Applicants are Woodruff Properties LLC and White Wave Maritime Consultants and Navigation LLC. This is a boundary line adjustment BLA two thousand twenty-two, zero, five. It's a proposal to adjust the common property lines between parcels zero, six, one, zero, two, six, five, seven, zero, 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 four, zero, zero, and zero, six, one, zero, two, six, one, eight, one, five, zero, three, zero, zero, off of State Highway one forty-one. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section twenty-six, Township six north, range ten east, Willamette Meridian, Clickattack County, Washington, in the Trot Lake vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health, treasures and planning department. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the boards finds it in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two thousand twenty-two, zero, five.
Any questions from my seatmates? Pretty simple. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-two dash oh five. Applicants Woodruff Properties and White Wave Maritime Consultants and Navigation. My motion is to approve.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve BLA twenty twenty-two dash zero five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Next up, we will have a public meeting to consider approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two dash one, two.
The applicants are Buddy Colander and Lorelin Abayeta. Boundary line adjustment BLA two thousand twenty-two dash twelve is a proposal to adjust the common property lines between parcels zero, five, one, six, three, three, one, seven, two, one, zero, two, zero, 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 five, one, six, three, three, one, seven, two, one, zero, three, zero, zero, and zero, five, one, six, three, three, one, seven, two, one, zero, four, zero, zero, off of Orchard Heights Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section thirty-three, Township five north, range sixteen east, Willamette Meridian, Clickattack County, Washington, in the Golden Dell vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. The signatures have been obtained from road, health, treasures and planning department. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two thousand twenty-two dash twelve.
Any questions from my seatmates?
No.
Any comments? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
He's waiting on me. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve boundary land adjustment BLA twenty twenty-two, applicants, Buddy Colander and Lorena Abayeta.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve BLA twenty twenty-two dash one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I do appreciate her reading the parcel numbers into the record so that we don't have to. The names are hard enough sometimes.
If I looked ahead and chose which one.
Chose the easy one. Well, next time I'll figure that out and I'll unplug my mic and then I'll be having mic difficulties.
Don't we usually do public hearings first before we do our public meetings?
Yeah, but I don't think there's any.
I don't think there's anything statutory, but we just always did, right?
It's done the way I did it because some public hearings are going to take quite a while. That way the public meeting, that is pretty routine and already been vetted, that staff can come in, make the business done and go back.
I like, I just, I was just wondering because I didn't know if we always did it the other way. And I was like, well, this makes a lot more sense. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing to review the proposed amendments to Clickattack County's model decommissioning plan. And I will declare this public hearing open. First off, we have a staff report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Now, the action being discussed today is an amendment to the Clickattack County's model decommissioning plan, resolution zero, four, three, zero, eight. Since this adoption in two thousand and eight, the plan has been used as a guide in development of decommissioning plans as a condition of building permit issuance. The goal of a decommissioning plan is to ensure developers and operators are held responsible for the financial and physical removal of the energy projects after their lifespan or, and/or after a period of no generation. After the energy project has run its usual useful life, the leased land will be returned to the landowner. So the hierarchy of decommissioning is really is the developers and or operators' responsibility. And most of the leases between the developers and the landowners include decommissioning provisions. So the landowners would also have a responsibility in some sense to decommission the project. That being said, the county is still requiring a decommissioning plan to ensure proper decommissioning. The model decommissioning has not been updated since two thousand and eight. And so the current proposal, I'm going to give you some highlights of what being changed is not a significant amendment to that. First, the plan is applicable to both wind and solar energy projects. And we want to make clear of that. The second point is we require, we will require the permit holder to start funding the decommissioning security no later than thirty days before the commencement of project constructions. Right now, we are asking them to give us a plan so we can issue the building permit. But we don't necessarily ask them to start funding from five to seven years from the dates of commercial operation. Third, the salvage value for the equipment in the amount not to exceed twenty percent. We lowered the cap from thirty-five percent to twenty percent, which is a more conservative approach. And then lastly, we remove one form of the financial securities that's currently in the plan. So we will no longer allow for a guarantee as an option. So those are the the plan, so we will no longer allow for a guarantee as an option. So those are the main changes in the current proposal. That pretty much is the summary of the staff report.
Next up, we will open this hearing for the purpose of hearing public comments in favor and opposed to considering the proposed amendments to the Clickatuck County Environmental Ordinance 12108. That is not correct. To the decommissioning plan, not that one. We have one name in the room, Mr. Barta. Could you please come forward if you'd still like to provide public comment? And again, this is three minutes per individual.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Dave Barta-Goldendale. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I have a few areas that I'll comment, and my comments are all in reference to this document, which you probably are looking at or have. First, Section 2.1.1 references dismantling of above-ground equipment and that it might be sold for scrap. Later in 2.2.7, the decommissioning security share that may be counted as scrap has been reduced to 20%, which is definitely a move in the right direction. However, why would any decommissioning security bill out for components, for instance, windmill turbine blades that are known to shed carcinogens and have no place or method of disposal at this time? In the case of items that cause long-term environmental concern, I submit no decommissioning security value should be allowed from scrap. Section 2.1.2 states subsequent steps in decommissioning include removal of concrete foundations to a minimum depth of three feet below grade. In the industrial solar applications I've seen so far, the panels are mounted on steel stakes, if you will, driven up to eight feet into the ground. I see no requirement that says they need to be removed or cut off. It doesn't mean it's not there, but I'd understand it to say that. I believe this draft allows the industrial solar company to leave the stakes the way it's written right now. I submit these steel I-beams should be reverse rattled out on decommissioning. Finally, the most recent copy I can find, no reference to lithium ion battery installations. To address decommissioning without addressing this most dangerous aspect of it is, I'd say legislative malpractice at a minimum, and unfortunately negligence might be a better term for it, not dealing with that. You've all seen at least one pre-submission plan that includes a two-acre lithium ion battery facility. It's a known fact Cypress Creek and Avon Grid regularly submit this in their applications. These batteries pose significant risk to Clickatuck County citizens. The Fukushima nuclear reactor in Japan worked perfectly in 2011 when its earthquake sensors shut the reactors down and fired the diesel generators up so it could continue to cool fish and decay heat. Unfortunately, the tsunami that crested the seawall destroyed the power grid, ground the emergency generators, and allowed the decay heat on the reactors to continue to grow, eventually resulting in three meltdowns at that facility. Fukushima was fully prepared for reasonable environmental disaster. Then the unreasonable one-in-a-million thing happened. You don't get to be wrong on this one with lithium ion batteries. Please take this chance in decommissioning to address that and dismantling and whatever cleanup that requires. I submitted all these ideas to Planning Director Lynn Blad. We had a meeting on August 24th, could have been the 23rd. Perhaps she's already developed the associated plans. I don't know. And if she has, that's wonderful. I appreciate that. In closing, on advice of Land Use Council, I consider the Energy Overlay Zone Ordinance open to public comment and amendment, and I'm submitting reasonable ordinances to protect citizens in the Clickatuck Valley. The E O Z ordinance outlines or upholds Clickatuck County's energy policy, and decommissioning is fully contained within it. Since this decommissioning revision is predicated entirely on the E O Z ordinance, that ordinance is open for public discussion and amendment. Thank you for your time, and I will submit these comments and things to clerks now.
Thank you, Mr. Barta. Next, we will go online. Is there anybody who has, would like to provide testimony on the draft decommissioning plan? 7211, Mr. Wagner.
Greg Wagner with C. In reviewing this amendment, there are things that need to be talked about. Here in 1.1, says this would extend the useful life to a period of far longer than 30 years. Leases with landowners for 30 years with possible options for additional lease periods. The facility could be terminated under the following circumstances. And it lists several things. Both several are missing. There's nothing in here that talks about corporate bankruptcy, when these, when these corporations go bankrupt. And then it also doesn't address if the leasing landowner decides not to extend his lease option. So who, who will be responsible then for the decommissioning? And I'd like to know in the next sentence, it says necessary authorization to proceed with the facility decommissioning. What is this authorization and who gives it? The... You know, when we have these corporations come in and they install the wind turbines and the giant concrete bases with reinforced concrete, the decommissioning says it only has to be removed to three feet below grade. That isn't, could be taken off completely. It might be on farmland now, but in the future, it might be where somebody's going to build a subdivision, and they'll dig down and put in foundations and hit giant pieces of concrete along with rebar, conduits, and various other things, wiring that they're going to leave in the ground. I believe that when these corporations come into our county and they claim to be environmentalists, they should leave this county the way they found it. Leave no trace. Leave no footprint. Just like when you go camping, whatever you carry in, you carry out. These guys come in our county, they make billions of dollars, and then they want to be able to leave their trash behind, whether it's steel pilings or solar panel supports or the basis for these wind turbines and the underground facilities that they have. That all needs to be taken out. We need to be concerned about the toxins that leach off the solar panels and contaminate the soil. The soil needs to be tested before any type of decommissioning so that they know that the soil is safe. And if it isn't, then the solar companies need to pay for the cleanup of the soil. And the lithium ion batteries, stated by Mr. Barta, they are a danger regardless of what Mr. Sauter says. These are a danger. It's been proven all across America. And they do leave a mess when they explode. They are, they do contain toxins, and that needs to be addressed. There's shark coming in this amendment. And this is all for the future of our county. We need to be good Samaritans of the land that we live on and not just allow these people to give us tax money and turn a blind eye to the decommissioning problems that exist. This, this happens all across America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay, back in the room. Is there anybody who would like to provide public testimony in the room on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Okay, back online. Ms. Basque.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this amendment for the decommissioning plan. I agree with what has been said so far by both participants and their comments. And I believe this update is very vague. And even the planning director just stated it's not very much significant changes put in it. Such words as component and equipment is referred to, that's very vague. Again, there's nothing regarding lithium batteries. We've sent you the information regarding Morris, Illinois. You know about that lithium fire explosion. You know about the EPA is still in there because of the toxins in the ground because of this situation with lithium batteries. So that needs to be addressed in this decommissioning plan. It needs to be more specific. And I don't think that these billion-dollar companies need to be getting scrap value credit. That's ridiculous. And the county should be looking out for the farmers. That I heard the planning director said that some of the decommissioning could be on their expense and that that would be up to them to, you know, work that out in their lease. Well, these are billion-dollar foreign entity companies. Just because they have a U.S. face to them does not make, does not negate that their parent company is a foreign entity. So, you know, who's looking out for our farmers to make sure they're not scammed on decommissioning? This is, you know, you should care about them. I've said this for a long time. If they're going to be scammed by these, these large billion-dollar solar things and their land left in ruins with them, with billion dollars of, or millions or how, I don't know how much to clean up. We don't know how much it's going to cost to clean up millions of solar panels in 20 years. We don't know what's going to happen. That's why you write these documents, to prevent things from harming the county, the cost to the county, and the farmer. And then number three, it reads the county may require the, the permit holder to implement the commissioning plan. You know, may, it needs to be clear, it needs to, you know, not shift the burden to the landowners. We've informed you, these, these people don't care about our land. They're in here to make money. And this is a very vague, vague update with simple components and equipment, doesn't cut it. Our county can do better than this. If you want to be the renewable county of Washington State and allow all these millions of panels of black glass and lithium batteries everywhere, windmills, then you can do better in protecting the county in the future. So I suggest that you go back to the drawing board. You get more specific. You get lithium battery verbiage. You get the phrases that these, absolutely lock these developers into the decommission. No escaping it. You can do this and leave no trace. You can do better. Do not approve this today. It needs more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basque. Is there anyone else in the room or online who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on. Going once. Going twice. And last chance to provide public comment on the, public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan. Okay, we are going to move to clarification of any public statements. We can ask the questions of staff or of any of the people who provided public testimony. Seatmates?
I did have a couple. So a clarifying question, Mr. Barta. On yours, first off, you, the scrap value, were you, were you advocating for it should be no scrap value whatsoever on any project or?
Only in the case where, where a component, for example, a windmill turbine blade has such an environmental cost. If the county ends up holding the bag, could happen, don't know. County holds the bag, it's, or, or can't get the company to do what they need to do decommissioning-wise, why would we allow them to use 20% of the scrap value when they have a component that's environmentally toxic that we can't even store it? That's what I'm getting at. If it's...
Okay, but how do I, how do I differentiate between, because you're, you have, now you've said turbine blade, so that means you're, you're basically saying no wind projects. All wind projects should have no scrap value because they have potentially a component that is... Okay, and I'm, I'm not...
Excuse me, I can't hear Mr. Barta.
Oh, yeah, if you're, I'm sorry. Could you come forward when you're...
Step forward, please.
Thank you.
I'll clarify.
Yeah.
I would just say that in response to your question, in, until they have found a way to make the wind turbine blades, that was the example I used. There may be others. It's just one that I thought of. Until they find a way to properly dispose of them in a way that they can be put away safely and aren't no longer an environmental concern, I don't know why we would accept scrap value on that project in general because we're just taking our problem either to the east end of our county where we unfortunately become a dump or to another county across the river where many are stored.
I would, I would argue and say...
I know, I understand. Yes, from the monetary standpoint, yes.
And a job standpoint, a lot of jobs. So, okay, so that's when, now solar, would there be an argument that there are, are there, if there's any components that are, have a negative environmental, that they should have no scrap value? And I guess what I'm getting at, if I take your statements and put them, you're basically advocating for zero for, for solar or wind. Because if there's a component, then it shouldn't be.
When I look at a windmill turbine, the, the scope of that, a single turbine, the blades are almost the same size when I look at them. They probably don't possess the same mass as a tower. If you put those three together, I would say they're 50%. And, and then there's the, the generator system and all that. I'm not versed enough. I can't speak. I know that I have heard and I have read that there are talks in solar panels. I purposely didn't use that because I, even though they are being warehoused in places, I understand. I have more direct knowledge, partly based on the legislative hearings, that we don't really have a way to store windmill turbine blades. So I use that example. But again, those three blades on a wind turbine are a significant amount of the size of the unit. So.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
So Mochi, moving that, is that 20% of the value?
Of the total decommissioning cost.
Of the total decommissioning cost. Now, my, my issue is, how do we know what the decommissioning cost is going to be? When it's 15 to potentially, with like pumped hydro, it could be 100 years out.
Right now, what, what I have is, you know, for the two solar projects, one is under construction, one is under review. During the review process, they do provide like a estimate for total decommission cost. And so I did pull those documents. They are part of the draft E I S. It varies quite a bit, you know, like for the Lunn Hill Solar Project, which is a 150 megawatts project, based on the calculations there, and I only take those numbers. The scrap, the salvage value is approximately 6.5% of the total decommission cost. And then when I pull the information from the Bluebird Solar, this is a 100 megawatt project. The salvage value actually is about 28% of the total decommission cost. It varies quite a bit. And so by the time we need to, when they start putting up like a financial schedule to see how they are going to achieve the total cost of decommissioning, they are required to provide supportive document to show us at that time, at the time when we negotiate this plan, to show us what the total decommissioning cost needs to be. And then every five years, we have an option to ask them to revise the plan if we find that it's not sufficient or any market change, you know, that would impact the total cost, and then they will have to amend that accordingly. But what we have is, you know, at the time when we negotiate, we have to get those values down at that, at that time. Yes, Commissioner.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that the Lunn Hill provided documents to you that said they were only going to have 6.5% scrap value?
No, not exactly. So I pulled the estimate cost, total cost for decommissioning. And I do the math. On this plan, it shows you know, how, how much your cost of the project to decommission. Like, you know, they include costs for labor, they include costs for, you know, heavy equipment and what have you. And then they also provide some credit for salvage value for some of the metal. And so...
Did they provide salvage value for panels or just metal?
Just metal. Because the panels itself, it probably can further differentiate about what can be recycled, what can be reused and whatnot.
Well, that's what I was expecting, I guess, is them to have something in there saying the panels are still worth 10 cents on the dollar and they're going to sell them in India as a scrap value. So that's what I was expecting, and it's not in there.
No. It didn't include those information in this plan.
But they didn't ask for credit. Maybe Bluebird did, didn't that's... They didn't ask for credit, maybe Bluebird did, didn't that's why they're not.
Did Bluebird have panels as part of their credit for scrap that they're going to resell them or? Is that's the argument I've heard from them, but is it in their proposal?
This is basically just a breakdown of the project and what components can be reused, can be recycled, and what can be scrapped to get some dollars. In our current plan, we allow for 35% salvage value. Just because we want to put a cap on that, because when we first have all these wind projects in our county, most of the developers at that time, I was told, I wasn't with the county at that time, but most of the developer would like to tell the planning department is that the salvage value alone will cover all costs of decommissioning. And the whole idea for us to have a decommissioning plan is I also want to make that clear on record, is I'm not suggesting we shift the responsibility to the landowner who signed the lease with the developer. What I'm saying is we are just trying to make sure all these projects can be decommissioned properly and the county will have sufficient fund to do that if the developer didn't hold up their responsibility. Because all these energy projects in our county, none of them so far is a public project. They are all private projects on mostly private land, you know, except for a few public land is leased with the state agencies. If there's a house burned down in the county, for example, county will not go ahead and go in without landlord's permission to start demolishing the building. It's nothing like that. So I just want to be clear, we are not shifting the responsibility. In the hierarchy, you should be the developer. And then I was told, you know, in some of the land leases, that's between the landowners and the developers. They negotiate those terms and county has no part of, but I was told that it will include provisions for decommissioning. So if the developer did not do it properly, landowner have options to force the developer to do it, or they can do on their own. But, you know, the developer may need to, you know, provide the funding to do that. I don't know what those terms are, but I'm just saying that would be an additional step. And if none of those being successful, then the county will have a decommissioning plan as a condition of approval for that project. We can then utilize the financial security that we have and to initiate any kind of decommissioning if we come down to that. And I just want to make that clear.
Right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Other question I had is, I noticed it, and obviously members of the public noticed it, that there's no real wordage in there about batteries. Granted, I would assume the batteries are going to be in shipping containers. And if they ever had to decommission, they would just pick the shipping container up and haul it wherever they're going to haul it to disposable lithium ion battery at work, resell it, or send it to India, or whatever they're planning on doing. Did you take batteries into a consideration when you looked at the overhaul of this?
I did, but, but I intentionally do not want to put the current day technology or knowledge about how to dispose the batteries into plans that we may not need to come down to the decommissioning 20 or 30 years down the road. I differentiate the difference with above ground and underground components. So the idea is for anything above ground, if they cannot be recycled, reused, and they are toxic, then they're supposed to dispose them at authorized sites or do it properly, just like anything else. If you want me to start using today's knowledge or technology to itemize what need to happen to what, I'm going to miss something 20 years down the road.
Well, as we get state legislature or state legislator making new rules, every year, your decommissioning plan is going to be out of date because they made a new.
And this is a guidance document. It does not cover every aspect of the decommissioning. We are trying to have a plan in place, excuse me, a plan in place, and we have money that we have access to. And then when the time comes for decommissioning, they still need to go through the proper permitting before they can do something, you know, they cannot impact any critical areas buffer, they cannot just start hauling things without getting a roha agreement with the county public works if they need to use public roads. If that's, yes.
If they had to have a permit to take the, the equipment down, they're also, I would assume, have to go through a CIPA to take the equipment out of the farmer's field. And in doing so, at that time would be the time for the public to say, do a soil sample and make sure it isn't full of hazardous chemicals. It's not in our decommissioning plan, it's in the CIPA 30 years from now when they go to decommission.
They would be required to comply with all the current rules and regulations at the time. If you want to demolish the house that you built 30 years ago, you need to come in and get a demolition permit. It's not like a part of the current approval.
Couple of questions. Please. To Mr. Barta's point, because I was looking as far as on solar, do the, because my assumption would be any decommissioning plan, when I think of decommissioning, it is you remove everything, put everything back. Anything above ground, and we can have some discussion about the below ground, if it's three feet or 30 feet or whatever it is. But certainly the above ground stuff all has to be removed. That is, I would assume, and if it's not, we need to make sure that that's crystal clear, that that is a requirement. So the, you know, the steel pilings and stuff, I mean, my assumption is that decommissioning means they go and they, they pull the pilings out of the ground. It probably from a practical standpoint, I can't imagine, because I guess the example, maybe it was in your email, was, you know, they dig down three feet and cut them off, and the part that's driven, you know, most of them are driven down, you know, three to six feet. It would probably be easier to pull the whole piling than to expose it and cut it off. But, but I'm wondering, is that something that we can tighten up to? Again, I'm relying on practicality, but the idea is that you pull all those stakes out of the ground. That's what decommissioning means to me. And I think that should be a requirement. Yeah, I had some questions as far as the, yeah, the lithium batteries, I'm assuming while they're not, which you kind of explained, you're not going to call out each specific disposal method because we don't know, it would have to be whatever the appropriate disposal for whatever the component is at the time when it's being decommissioned. So if lithium ion batteries, if there is some, I don't know how you dispose of them. But there must be some, we have some appropriate way of disposing of them now. I hope we do. Because if we don't, then we need to have a discussion about if there is no proper disposal of them now, then yeah, we need to, but that would come up in the permitting process. And just correct me, we have no, we have no permitted lithium ion battery storage facilities in Clickatack County?
As of today, we do not.
Right. And I know they have, as, as Mr. Barta said, they do Cypress Creek and the other ones as a, just a, they generally submit those just as kind of a placeholder, two acre. But they have pulled those out of, like, we have not permitted one of those, and they're, so that would be, and when those are so not Bluebird, but the other, the other one. Lund Hill. If they want to add a battery storage component to that, that will be a whole permitting process separate from their, you can't, you can't permit and get your thing built and then just kind of stick this thing in there. That would be a new, that would be an amendment to their permit, and they would have to go through the whole process.
Right, that would be a permitting process. And, and I just wanted to add, even though I did not be very specific about lithium battery, but under session 2.1.1, the last statement is basically saying that that unsalvage material will be disposed of at authorized sites.
Right.
So if this is, you know, something toxic, I do not believe Roosevelt would take it. They would have to do the proper testing to do it. And so we try to cover it, but I'm not trying to make it so much flexible that would not take care of those problems, is that I think we, we need to wait till the time come and see what the technology and what the requirements are at that time before we have all those specific in the plan.
I don't right now.
I would say thank you to everyone for your comments. I'm one of those plan for the worst and hope for the best. And I know that, you know, decommissioning, anyone who accepts one of these land use agreements should always have their lawyer review it and, you know, make sure that there's in there to protect those landowners, which from everything I've ever heard is in there. With regards to what happens and why we require a bond, in essence, usually now it's likely going to be bonds for the decommissioning. If it gets to that point where we have to call the bond to decommission.
Something went wrong.
Something has gone very wrong. And the cost to decommission, so say they have a bond, for example, say they have a bond for 20 million to decommission. And they come out and they go, well, we're going to go out of business. And we know it's going to cost $40 million to decommission because the last time we updated our cost estimate, we were off by quite a bit. So we're going to walk out. That isn't a very pretty site for the landowner. That's not a pretty site for the county. And then we're stuck hoping that there is salvage value out of something to cover some of our costs. If you've walked away from a project, there's probably no salvage material. And it's, if we look at, you know, what our abatements cost, it's going to be a lot more. If you look at what our contracts are coming in right now, it's 40% over engineers' estimates in one year time. Every time we put out a contract, not only do we have to pay the whole amount, but we also have, like on this building and every road project, we also have an amount over and above for contingencies. So when we say we're going to have a decommissioning bond that's out there, and we're only going to do it for maybe 80% of the value of the anticipated cost to decommission that. I look at like the Hood River Bridge. And, you know, if we were to decommission the Hood River Bridge, it's going to be anywhere from 30 to 50 million dollars. And there's no bond on that. There's no, nobody, the port doesn't have the money to clean that up. And that's an estimate, right? The only thing that would make sense to me in a decommissioning plan where we're putting a bond up, so somebody else, we hope to God the bonding agency doesn't go bankrupt too, and the other one does. Right? But you should take the entire anticipated cost of the decommissioning, and then you should also add a 10% contingency, just like we do for building anything. And then on top of that, you should update that every five years, minimum, based on your anticipated cost of decommission. And then you should also add a CPI to it for each year for the cost of the increases. And that's if we're trying to protect the county and the taxpayers. Because we have all sorts of things that we've taken on that were private property, like the mill. Okay? And I'd say the mill is, was far more toxic and had far more problems in it because most of the stuff down there was 100 years old with old technology. You know, the transformers were a little bit different than they are today. And we got the property, but we got the liability. And that was when the property owner, you know, walked away. And sure, they had to, they paid a fair amount of money. But they didn't take it all. And so if we're going to accept these massive projects in our communities, I think that that bond needs to cover the true cost of removal. Do I think that's going to stop anybody from getting that bond? Well, that bonding agency, right, they're going to look at that, and they're going to be, well, what's our risk? And what kind, what do we think we can get out of scrap, scrap out of it too? So that's how I would do it. I mean, I just look at, you know, whether it's a wind turbine or a solar panel, sure, on the solar panels, you've got, you know, those vertical stakes and you've got the metal and the value of that. But if you're going to decommission and you're going to have to use the bond, I wouldn't assume that we're going, we're going to need every penny we can get. Because if they could make money doing it and do it cheaper than that bond, they'd do that. Mr. Christopher?
So when we first started this, my opinion's always been the 35% of scrap value number way off. Waiting seven years to put your money down, risky. But the, the more I look at this and think of this, and I, I mean, I kind of understand scrap value on solar because I honestly believe that if they were decommissioning a solar facility in California that's 20 years or 30 years old, and you're going to show me a 100 watt panel that's still putting out 60 watts of power, to me, that's worth value, and I would buy that panel for my house. I mean, because I'm paying pennies on the dollars for it, even though it's not as good as the new ones. I think there is a scrap value to old solar panels. But it's a matter of how much. Now, it worries me when they don't even classify it in their numbers as scrap value, but then I look at windmills and go, why are we, why do we have windmills and solar panels? It's the same scrap value because I would imagine windmills pretty, or solar panels pretty easy, unbolt them, rip the electrical out, which is all sold for copper scrap. Yank the pilings out of the ground should be pretty quick, convenient, because they're not concreted. I would imagine windmills would be a hell of a lot bigger pain in the butt to take down and/or sell for scrap. So I have, I still have an issue with a 20% scrap on either of them, but especially windmill. I would prefer that number be smaller and/or, like Commissioner Anderson said, none.
So how do you balance, though, the example you gave of the Hood River Bridge, which is 100 years old? How would they have known to put $50 million aside 100 years ago? To to decom, I mean, I guess that, okay, I have a question first. So are their current decommissioning plan uses an expected life expectancy of 20 years? Is that it? And so the, the company, which I get, I have a couple of questions on that, because they provide what they think it will cost to decommission. We need some way to try to ground truth that, because, you know, we're working off of their numbers that they're giving us, which is is a little scary, because you're going, because they understand they're going to try to downplay the cost because they have to put the bond up to cover that. And so we need, we need some way to kind of independently check that. Does that, does that seem like a reasonable? And I get the, you know, if you're going out anything beyond 20 years, you are literally guessing. You have no way of knowing what that cost is going to be. And so I do like, I think we should mandatorily do, we should be checking those numbers every five years and making those adjustments as far as, because who knows, maybe there will be new technology that our concerns actually, it goes the other way. I don't think it, but it is possible that it is, and there should be. But I do worry that if we, otherwise, we're we're going to have to make, because I, I do think we need security to cover the cost, the full cost of decommissioning. And again, this is in a worst case scenario, that if, you know, if the, because I'm assuming I don't really, I don't foresee unless, because again, we did the same thing with wind turbines. I don't think wind turbines, we're, we're in year 13, 14 on projects. They're not starting yanking windmills out in the next five or six years. They're not going to. And so I think that lifespan is a questionable thing as far as, but we have to have some planning window to plan for. So we plan for 20 years, that's the lifespan. We guess, we try to get an educated guess as to what the reasonable cost of removal is 20 years from now, factoring in all the inflation and what we think it is. And then they have to put up a bond. I'm open to having, let's have some discussion about the, you know, scrap value, should there be any? I will say, back in 2008, there was a huge, like, the industry. Should there be any, I will say back in 2008, there was a huge, like the industry had a lot of figures that were like, you know, it's 100%, like we'll be able to get, you know, that was before the whole discussion about, we obviously didn't buy it because it's 35, but they were starting from 100. And we were trying to balance out what we thought. And there was some reasonable assumptions, given the price of what steel was as far as in the tower and the components, as far as the, and the, you know, reusing some of the stuff in the nacelles and stuff. I don't think we gave many value for blades. But we were like, okay, we can live with 35%. And again, it's, and I, and I think as we have experienced that number, we obviously are uncomfortable with it because in the draft, it's been moved to 20. And whether or not we need to move it to zero or not, I don't know, we can.
Well, to me, it depends on what you're putting your decommissioning at. Why is it being decommissioned because it's 30 years old? Or because there was a hailstorm that moved through with softball sized hail?
Right.
That destroyed every single panel in the whole farm. There's no scrap value of a solar panel after that.
Right.
So if you're.
So but do you plan, because we don't know, if you're planning for the worst, then you don't know in the likelihood that the, it's going to get hit with a hailstorm, we don't know? And so do we just plan that it, every single project's going to get hit with hailstorm?
To me, you either plan for the worst and that would be no scrap value at all. Or you plan for what's probably the reality, which is they're just old. And or this company's closing down and they're going to pack them all up, they're going to put them on a barge and they're going to send them to India for 30 cents on the dollar. And if you do that, odds are they didn't even need a bond because you're still going to have more money in selling those panels than you're ever going to have in pulling the damn tubes out of the ground. So it, it's, it, it depends on if you're planning for worst case scenario or best case. And I'm sure the solar company has given us best case, you know, shouldn't be a scrap. And we're going to have to judge whether we want to make our plan based off best case or worst case or somewhere in the middle.
I don't think we can set the value. I think that the best thing to do would be as part of the process to permit these projects. You know, when we go through an EIS or, you know, through our CIPA analysis, when we do these, the easiest thing to do would be as, you know, we hire, you know, geologists and geomorphologists and, you know, we hire experts to do all sorts of things. And we require those people applying for permits to, to pay for all that. One of those things to pay for that I think would make the most amount of sense is a third party appraiser on estimator on the cost per decommission. And that person or that group, then, you know, every five years would update that cost, or somebody would update that cost of what that cost would be in a worst case scenario to decommission if that company were to no longer be there. And that should be just part of the, the process for permitting these projects.
And I would agree that they should be paying for their own special outside expert. Not, I don't want to trust their opinion. I want them to hire an outside person that gives us the data. The question comes to, again, do you want to allow scrap value? And if so, up to what percent?
Well, so it, it also comes down, this has come up a long time, many times. Should it be us who hires the outside expert? And then we get reimbursed from them in the, in that process? Or should we trust them on what they say the cost is of the person they fired? One will get you two different numbers. I promise you, every estimator can give you two different numbers.
Well, the same company, depending on who they're hired to buy, is going to give you two separate numbers. I guess my point is there's no way to be 100% covered because you don't know what's coming five years from now. And I guess I'd say it's just like the road hall agreement we're finding out. It, it doesn't take long to say, whoops, missed that one. We'll have to fix it on the next. So.
You're also seeing in the road hall agreement that these companies want to do. They, you, you can point out and say, look, you're having damage to this road. And they're like, well, it's not part of the road hall agreement. We're not going to pay for it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Rather than being the good neighbor and being like.
Contract. I guess I would also look at it this way. If you made a contract and you worded it however you wanted to word it, and you said 20% scrap value. And you had another contract sitting right next to it that said 0% scrap value. Is that solar farm and/or that windmill facility going to go, nope, not going to build there because you don't have scrap value in your contract? I would venture to say that the amount of money that they put into the retainers bond is chump change compared to the value they're spending on the facility. That lowering the scrap value is not going to be the deal breaker that sends them off to Yakima County or Benton County or anywhere else that currently has a solar moratorium. So I'm not terribly worried about it.
No, I mean, if you're moving it from 35% to zero, then you are increasing their cost by 35% of the decommissioning. Because they're getting currently, they're getting a credit, whatever that number is, if it's $10 million. They're saying you only have to bond for seven, you know, for 35% less of that because the salvage is going to cover that other piece of it. And so there, it will cost, I'm not arguing that that's good or bad. I'm just saying there is an additional and if that's, you know, then who cares? I mean, as far as if that's.
I can justify scrap value, or at least some scrap value under best case scenario with solar panels. I can't get to 20% with windmills. I, I don't know where they're getting the 20% other than maybe the scrap out of the metal. But by the time you dig the concrete up, you pay for all the trucks to go to the dump with the windmills. How much they going to get charged to go to a dump somewhere in Virginia? Or wherever's taking windmill blades? And then you're hauling all the, the, the concrete. Are you getting enough out of the steel to pay for those? I, I just can't justify 20% on windmill. Solar panels, I, I can almost, I can get there. But having them both have the same decommissioning, and we may never see another wind project in this county. But I don't want to look past it. Because at this, at this point, I can't see 20% for a wind project.
You know, my problem is, is these, these companies are with the new investment act. They're going to get a 30% bonus, you know, tax credit. And if they produce it in America, they get another 20%. They're going to have 50% tax credits. And they want to come here and they want to come to Clickatack County. On top of that, they also don't pay any sales tax to us pretty much. If they hire, you know, and follow their rules that we continue to make easier and easier. So on top of that, they're not paying any sales tax. And assuming any liability to the county for ever having to clean it up or to mitigate that, doesn't make any sense to me. When, you know, we're literally giving these companies billions and billions of dollars in tax breaks.
Let's clarify, we, we are not giving them anything.
But we as a county, as a country.
I know, but there, we have listeners that will be like, why are you giving them, you giving them tax breaks? Why are you giving them sales tax breaks? It's like, we are not giving them anything.
May I?
Yes.
So even though we have 20% salvage value that we can use towards the total decommissioning plan, if we remove this entirely, doesn't mean they cannot sell their salvage equipment somewhere else. So what would increase the cost at the very beginning is what kind, what forms of financial security they choose? And you just make the bond more expensive because they need to account for the total cost. And it's not going to be the true cost. A lot of other jurisdiction, I, I look at a lot of those. I can't tell you which one. I look at a lot of those. Some do not, we allow any salvage value accounted for, for the decommissioning plan as the forms of financial security. However, nothing in our code would prohibit the developer to do whatever they need to do to recoup those costs.
So I guess you could make an argument that if we didn't allow it in our decommissioning plan, when they're going out to get their bond, assuming most of them are going to get a bond, they're not going to put cash upfront. They're going to, they're going to go to somebody else. They could make the case to whoever they're getting the bond from that they may get a discount on the bond because they're like, well, we're not getting any credit. That doesn't mean the salvage doesn't exist, that they would have to make that case to whoever was bonding them.
Just not with the county.
Just not with the county. So yeah, okay. It kind of puts it on them then.
That makes me feel better.
I mean, the goal is, is if you run the project for 30 years, then you're going to repower the project. And you're going to pay or hopefully recoup your scrap value when you take those out and then you put those solar panels in, in your, somewhere else. And then you're going to repower it and we'll continue to get, you know, continue. But at some point, baby technology changes and we don't need solar power anymore.
Or the bridge is too skinny. It's got to be replaced.
Well, that's where you blow up the bridge, you sink the bridge, the bridge becomes fish out of that.
Anyways, I, I still think that, you know, that when they go out and they get the bond, the bond is for if, in essence, if they fall apart, if their business model falls apart, that's what the bond is. The bond is to protect the county. And the landowner in essence. And you, you know, if I was, if I was the landowner and somebody wanted to put a bunch of stuff on my property, of course, I would ask for financial security for it to be removed at the end. It's going to cover the cost to do it. Or I'm going to accept the risk that I might get stuck with some of it. But we're not getting, we're not receiving the benefit of it as the county. We are looking out for all the taxpayers of the county, saying that we don't want to get stuck with the cost of it. And I don't know what their bonds cost, but I wouldn't hope that it's not too awfully on this.
Well, based on 2008 and those discussions, they claimed it was, it was a lot. So I don't know. Because I mean, if you're the bonder, I mean, it must be a lot if it is, we're all talking about risk and liability. So are the bonding people. I mean, that's, that's, they're going through the same process.
The solar companies getting the project paid for half by taxpayer dollars. So they're going to be getting a.
Yeah, again, I'm.
They're getting heavily subsidized. They got to pay a little bond over here. It doesn't break my heart. So yeah, with that, I, I think there's a, I think there's a consensus, but I will ask again that there's zero in there for scrap value. Is that where we set?
I mean.
Was there still discussion on that?
The part that scares me is, is like, none of these would be being built if it were for the subsidies. That tells you right there that it's not financially viable. And so at some.
I don't know. We have a whole bunch of projects here that the very same statement was made 13 years ago and they're still operating and they're still making money for their, the companies that built them and nobody's walked away from them. And they're not a bunch of derelict windmills and because again, a lot of these arguments were exactly the same thing, that within five years that we were going to be nothing, we were going to see a sea of busted up, broken things. Everybody went bankrupt and walked away and we were going to get stuck with it all. And that was 13 years ago. And I don't see it. And so the same argument, I don't know. I mean, solar's different than wind. I, I get that. But.
But we've also have not seen the end of the lifespan of any solar, of any projects. We see people voluntarily repowering and you're going to see more repowering.
Right. And that's, but that is what they do. As far as we've already seen, we have, we had wind projects that are only 10 years old, 12 years old that have repowered. So they're obviously the financial model works that they could.
It makes sense for them to repower.
I mean, and they've gone and they've taken the blades off and changed the nacelles. They've done all this stuff and they, the financial model works at least to the, and again, this is from everybody saying the economics don't work, the, the whole thing's going to go bankrupt. And we're going to be looking at a bunch of, and I was you know, skeptical as far as so.
How long does a solar company?
I do, I'm well aware of the solar company that was bankrupt.
So I don't, I don't know. I think we need to be, we need to be protected. And that is, I completely, that's the whole idea, is that we need to have a reasonable assumption of what it's going to cost to have to pull things out, even though, you know, again, the, these bonders are going to, they're going to have to go through that analysis for themselves as to what their risk is for what money they want upfront to bond that, whatever it is. And that's up to them to figure that out. It's not up to us. We just, so I'm, I'm, you know, and as far as on the scrap value, yeah, I mean, I can get to if we just don't want to, it just, because it doesn't mean there isn't any scrap value. It's just like we. They can argue with somebody else about it as far as it, to bring their bond rate if they feel like it's not. And I would suspect the industry will settle that as far as the bonding folks as far as what the value of that is, because that would be part of their discussion. So I'm, I'm fine. I can get to the no scrap on this. It's, because that always was the contentious piece, was that and that was questionable. And then also the guarantee, which we've eliminated, which was always a little like.
How many chose the guaranteed?
Ah, there was, because some of them were public.
Like, I want to say at least three.
Yeah.
And those to me were the contentious, those two and the wait seven years to put up your money.
Right. Although the argument is that.
Spend 150 million and walk away, please do.
Yeah, it's like that. And that was the argument, but.
And then we're going to go into the power business.
But again, if you're bonding it, they'll build that into it too, where they're thinking, we have zero risk for the first five to seven years. And so that's going to be factored. They'll minus, right, and there's, there's risk. Minus whoever their insurance carrier is.
How do we go about this now? You, I think you have adequate direction. Do you rewrite? And we have a new public hearing or do you just rewrite and we voted and?
What we would do is, is we will leave the public comment open. We will direct staff to make revisions and we will open, continue the public hearing with another public comment period.
After the draft.
The new draft.
Is it significantly different?
Would you like me to present the drafts to you to make sure this is consistent with today's discussion before we?
Yeah, I would say yes. Sometimes translation is not.
Do you, do you have enough clarification on? Do you have any questions for us on clarification?
No.
Were we clear enough? Okay. Sometimes we talk a lot.
We don't say anything.
Give direction very well.
Thank you for asking.
So I want to make sure you have the right.
There's going to be a new draft and do we just return it to the planning director rather than continuing to leave the public comment hearing, hearing open? What would you prefer? You're the one that has to put it in.
I, I just want to clarify with the new draft statement because I am not seeing the significant changes to a lot of those provisions.
That's true. We're just really eliminating things really. If you're taking scrap out.
Right. And to tighten up, you know, the three feet.
Right.
About pylons.
Okay.
I personally would leave written and vocal bolt open until after the public has had a chance to read and digest the new draft.
Okay, so on my public hearing legislative, it is allowed. So I think the best thing to do would be that we will direct the planning director to make the changes based on the discussion today. Public comment will be left open. And we will have a further opportunity for public comment next Tuesday, if that's okay with you.
Of course.
Next Tuesday as well. And those who have commented are welcome to comment again on the changes on the new draft.
Okay.
Would that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree with the planning director. This actually isn't significantly changed. It's, we're going down. I mean, we're doing.
We're not adding things, we're removing things.
Removing things, so.
So I will have a draft and likely will be in your Thursday packet. And just keep in mind, this is a second draft. If I misunderstand you in any way, I'll just make another revision after that.
Just a clarification too. To the comment, we had one of our commenters said that by, by amending the this, we're actually opening the EOZ for revision.
I, I do not see it that way. This is a resolution that was adopted in 2008.
Right, which was after. Right. Which was after the E O Z.
It was not a part of the zoning ordinance at all. The E O Z is a provision in our zoning ordinance. And so I do not believe we are opening up for the zoning ordinance. It is related to energy projects in our county. However, this is a guidance document for decommissioning plan. So people are welcome to comment.
Well, this decommissioning plan would be used if it was not an, like if I was permitting one outside of the E O Z, we would still, this, this would still be the guidance document.
That's the intent, that why we want to clarify. This is for both wind and solar projects.
Okay. I concur with you incidentally.
Thank you.
Oh, that's exactly what I was going to say. Whether you're inside the U Z or outside the U Z, this is a document to say. I don't see why it would open and I don't see why there would be a CIPA required to amend this. I mean, what we're doing is, is we're asking for security. This is non-project specific. Okay?
Okay. So you need a motion, Mr. Chair, I believe. Mr. Motion, I would make a, I would. Mr. Motion, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to continue this hearing, uh, to next Tuesday at one thirty. Leaving the public comment period open, both oral and written.
Can we go at two thirty possibly?
Two thirty. I was just, public hearing is at one thirty is, or if that's our standard time.
Yes.
I amend my motion to two thirty next Tuesday.
Um, well, then I would second both the motion and the amendment.
You're just making it difficult for to write all this down.
We gotta vote on the amendment first if you want to get it to particulars.
Are, are there, is there?
Aye, aye.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Um, I would say thank you, Mochi, for working on this. I would also say thank you to the public who commented. Um, this is exactly the way it is supposed to work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And I would also say that the public, thank you for, um, being calm and, and addressing your grievances with the plan uh, in a calm and rational way. It actually helped. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we are moving into new business to consider the acceptance of the landfill gas improvement fund committee's decision and recommendation to approve the formalization of a commitment by the county to provide funding assistance of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to make improvements to the Glenwood water system corrosion control system as required by the Department of Health and to locate any possible leaks in the system. And, and this is to be included in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Has everyone had a chance to look at the document that was?
Yep. Did we have an answer on, um, what is being funded at a hundred percent and what is not being funded at a hundred percent? What, what, what was the final answer from the P U D? On how much they were going to allow to be spent on Dallasport?
On Dallasport, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have a force landfill gas improvement funding assistance agreement between Clickatuck County and Public Utility District Number One. Uh, this is, uh, for the use of landfill gas dollars in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, towards the Glenwood. I didn't get the right words. Uh, Glenwood Water System Corrosion Control System. My motion is to approve, uh, the agreement.
Is there a second?
Um, I'm gonna suck it up and second, but I'm gonna make a comment when it comes time for comment.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
Those cheap.
Hope they're listening. Um, they may disagree with me, but I think it's, um, unfortunate. That's my politically correct word, uh, that we can fully fund uh, the, the projects in four communities, but we can only halfway fund uh, the project in the communities that isn't theirs. Uh, and I find it unfortunate that the four communities don't have to see a higher gas or higher water bill to fund their projects where the poor Dallasport community is now going to see a higher water bill to fund, help fund theirs. Um, when it should have been shared. So that's about all I'll say without getting written up in the newspaper.
Oh, well, then for discussion, I, I would, I would state that, um, of their four projects, they are not fully funded. Even this one, the first one that we have before us, um, was something that, uh, the cost exceeded what they were asking for. And I would also mention that the water and wastewater, uh, rates in these communities are already higher than what Dallasport currently pays. And that was the points that they were making. They were logical. All those in favor? That's fine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You have to second it. I would have done.
I know. I think you guys had made the vote a month ago before.
All right. Casey, do you have something for us?
I don't.
Jen. Well, there's a whole bunch of people in here, so.
They're my backup.
Oh. Sounds expensive.
You guys are expensive.
Yes.
I have two things. Um, so in order to, for Pam to, um, get the data done for the state auditor, um, there has to be a system closing roll. Uh, there are some J V's out there that are, um, administrative. Um, J V's to correct prior years going back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. There are four of them, um, that exceed budget level. Um, the auditor's office and, um, our CPA firm are comfortable with being able to explain to the S A O the reasoning behind this because they are technical adjustments. So I'm requesting approval to lift the budget checker.
I mean, yes, we've, we've done it before.
Okay. The second one, um, I thought I heard earlier today that there was an approval for a mental health department creation starting January one. Um, is that correct?
Well, it's approval for them to continuing in that fashion.
We don't, we don't have an agreement signed.
Or do I have a contract from the state that says they're paying for it?
Correct. So, um, that's why I'm here. So I have to have preliminary budgets published tomorrow morning. Um, and in order to do anything between January and June of next year, I need a budget built, um, tonight. And I can't without resolutions, um, drafted and approved and signed to create a fund, to create a department. Um, I also need, I also need, you know, four million dollar startup cost, if that's the, the total amount, um, to be able to budget in there. I can't have certain bars number set up without contracts. So I'm not really sure how I'm going to be able to build that budget to start January one. I, I do not see it feasible.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Unless we didn't hear you correctly. So the direction we walked out with was January one. Be ready to set it up for twenty-one employees. Department, the staffing.
You just keep adding more employees.
Oh, that's the number.
It was seven and a half when we started this morning, so.
So it would have to be set up. And the potential exists that we have one to twenty-seven employees on the payroll in January before you need a budget to cover. Some would call the best case, some would call the worst case. Plus, how do we get reimbursed from Beacon? Is it upfront? Then you went through the contract, reading the, over the lunch hour, trying to figure out how you get the seat in? Do you have to give a monthly payroll? It was three hundred thousand a month roughly for the first year.
And the current contract for, at quick glance, um, Beacon had said six hundred thousand dollars of four months worth of startup cost. That wasn't both programs, it appeared to me. Um, we would still have to have the money there waiting on reimbursements is my understanding. Additionally, there's going to be work outside of Beacon. Also, my understanding that would be Medicaid billed. So that wouldn't be an immediate return with revenue after that billing. Um, current cycle is about approximately a year return. So there's going to have to be county funds there. Um, on top of all, the administrative piece to the finance, I would advise that it runs through the finance committee on how to set that up in the system.
But we're going to be starting in November. We're going to need a supplemental this year in order to create the program and hire the people and everything anyways, right?
I have to, just a reminder that we cannot expense before supplementals are approved either. So that, that's why I said June here, because the first supplemental of the year would be May. The hearing would be May and approved in May. Um, so looking at this realistically, uh, from the administration side of things, I, I just don't see this being possible to be set up until, and fully, and functioning until June, on the administration side of it, on, outside of the mental health part of it.
So, I mean, it's a budget and budget just allows you to expend dollars.
Correct.
Can you not make a placeholder that says, uh, mental health department? And put this is the maximum amount of money budgeted for this in the expenses and then have the revenues and be pretty bland in general about it and have the revenues match that?
I don't have a funder department to put that in. And I can't have one until I have a resolution.
You can't put that as a placeholder as a new fund for the document?
There, one, we don't have any new fund numbers available. We, at, is my understanding from the auditor's office. So that is being looked into now. Um, we have a fund that potentially might be able to be repurposed. But has to be double checked whether that can be done as well. Um, so I, I don't have a place to put this at yet.
One issue with that fund currently is there's, there's disability funds in there that have to be segregated or moved. They cannot be spent for mental health, we believe.
And we have to determine if they, if they originated from disabilities as well, or if they originated from landfill. If they originated from landfill, then we're, we're fine. But.
So my question is, is how can you not have any fund numbers available? You can't just go in the program and create a new fund?
Pam is online. Pam, can you answer that question?
Number nine nine nine.
Six six six.
I think we're max, I, I believe that there are certain.
Numbers mean certain things.
Pam, are you online?
I'm trying.
Okay, we can hear you.
Oh, uh, there is funds available, it looks like, cause they would be in the one hundred funds, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, there's quite a few funds that would be available.
Okay, good. I was told otherwise.
So, so Pam, can, by the end of today, can we put a placeholder fund number that we can use? For building a budget?
I believe we can't do that without a resolution.
Right. The resolution before we can actually create a fund, I mean, we need to know for the setting up the bars numbers, we can't just go pie in the sky. We need to have like the contract. Is it going to be a federal grant? Is it a state grant? Is it a pass through? What is it for revenue? We can set up expense numbers, but revenue side, you know.
I can't just set up the expense.
Looking for trouble is what we're looking for.
But this is for the budget, the preliminary budget that gets posted. And we can still make changes. We can't go up, but we can go down. So can we get a fund assigned and get, you know, under revenues, Beacon contract zero 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 one question mark? And slap four million dollars in there and then on the expenses, slap four million dollars of expenses.
I don't know how they come up with all the bars numbers to do that in the short.
In two hours?
It's still, you know, go home tonight.
And I have been trained that we cannot just assign a fund number without a resolution and adopt it.
Is there, I, I hate to even suggest it. Is there a prohibition on, why can't this be a general fund department? Is there anything that prohibits it just being housed in the general fund? I'm not, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I, it, this all came down today and I heard at the end of four million dollars and a new department. I was like, what just happened? So, um, I'm a little, I don't know the details to that.
And I was at licensing and overheard her conversation with power.
Right, right.
And there's, there's no way in two hours.
I never thought, actually, I didn't think of the budget. Like, it's like, oh yeah, we're on those deadlines, as far as the deadlines.
You gotta tell them you're ready four months in advance.
Advance, right.
I don't know how it.
So what's the solution?
June.
So we can't run a department until June?
That would be my solution.
So we can't create a department for nine months?
I could create it and I could have it on, I, you just can't spend any money. And, and realistically, will you? I mean, you're still, you still don't have the, um, Health, Department of Health permitting. Um, that's still out there. The state hasn't approved it yet. So I mean, I don't think that that's unrealistic.
I think that if we let, if we let our own policies and procedures uh, get in the way of providing mental health for six months, where we've been jumping through hoops at the last minute on the last day in order to provide this when we have no other options.
Sure. I think it's state policies and procedures. It's the state.
I mean, us, we, the state, we, um, so what happens, for example, when we find out, we, we put this out to the public tomorrow and then we find out in three weeks that somebody's budget has to go up, starting January one. There's a way to do that, is there not?
Supplemental and they cannot expend it until after the first supplemental is approved in May.
But generally there's, I mean, in that case, if there's already a budget, it's just, cause we budget for the whole year, that, that's why the first supplemental, cause there's dollars there.
There's dollars there that they can use.
It's just like, it's got to be fixed before they run out of money, but we're starting on January first with zero.
And your first supplemental is March or April?
It, it's May. And it's the hearing.
Cause I'm not too interested in, in trying to, uh, step up a budget in two hours. Uh, and or get the mistakes or the audit findings that that creates. Um, so I think at this point, we are stuck until June. And at this point, I think we are stuck with looking for the brother of comprehensive out there in the world that's willing to take this on for six months until we can.
I commend you for the decision. I'm just trying to be realistic on the administration side.
Can we push back our budget until we can, you know, write the resolution to create a new fund that we can add dollars in here? I know you don't want to. I know nobody wants to.
How do you make all the bars numbers and everything else magically appear in no time? And that's an entire different department.
It's already advertised. I don't know if I have to advertise that it's canceled. Um, I would have to research and then re-advertise. So now we're a whole month out and we are supposed to open the hearing by statute on Tuesday of, the first Tuesday of October.
Right. So you have to go from that day and back up and that's how we end up with the date is now.
Why I have to have it published by tomorrow.
At this point, what's our target date for them to adopt the budget or approve the budget?
November.
You got a month, you got a date in December.
But I have to have with a preliminary.
But we're statutorily, we're supposed to advertise for the budget by October sixth.
And open the hearing.
And open the hearing.
By October fifth, I believe. I, I don't know how to get around that.
So my.
At this late in the game.
We don't. My advice is we can't. My advice is we don't step it up until June is the plan and we need to find.
We have to find, to provide services until June.
It's willing to, otherwise there's nothing I can do about it. It ain't my damn fault. It's, it's comprehensive's fault for leaving everybody holding the bag. So I, I'm not getting in trouble legally for playing around with numbers and bar numbers and funds on two hours notice.
The other thing is, if I may, is.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, so people can hear you.
They'll freak out.
The other thing is, it doesn't, we have no time to research where the revenues come from to see if these are restricted revenues, which would predicate whether it's gotta be its own fund to Dave's claim.
Right.
You know, there's, there's, you know...
They said if we rush it, we're gonna mess it up. And then we're gonna get a finding, and that's not what I want.
But this is the preliminary budget, we can change the preliminary budget when we have the contract in place and we know what it's going to be. We have another week's worth of negotiation.
We don't have the contract in place.
They said, we'll have, you know, when we have a contract in place or getting close, then we can set up the VARs numbers and everything else. But for your preliminary budget, and you can make changes to it now, put in VARs number, question mark, question mark, question mark, to be filled in later.
I can't, I can't put question marks in the system. And I have to run those, those reports have to be system reports that get published.
That's why I was wondering, and do we have a way, if we were gonna contract for services in that Ju, January to June period?
I could. I could, but where's the revenue coming from?
Right.
I mean, it's coming from copper, or from bacon.
But I don't have that contract.
And like the auditor says, we don't know if those are restricted funds in there.
We have no idea. Well, at this point, we don't.
That was frustrating for you too, we're not trying to push back. We're just trying to figure out how to do it by our rules and the state's rules appropriately, that's all we're trying to figure out, not whether we should do. You've already told us to do it, we're just trying to figure out how to do it. Jen's kind of in a tight spot, so she's just getting her professional...
Again, I think we're opening ourselves up for a can of worms to try to push it through on the timeframe. And I, I'm not interested in that.
I think this is a budget. I think budgets change all the time. I think that, I understand you need to put something in there for VARs numbers.
Then you can't do that, the VARs numbers have to come from the...
We generate the VARs numbers.
And how long does it take to generate VARs numbers?
Doesn't take long, but you have to know where the money's coming from before you can set it up. It's all gotta be according to the VARs manual.
The reason we were able to set up an arbitrary placeholder number for the ARPA funds is because we knew it was direct federal funding. So that was part of the VARs number, I mean, there's statutory requirements to the, how the VARs number is set up.
So, we can't put in, in, between, if you lose a contract and you gain a contract, or say the state decides to change their mind and they're gonna use federal funds here rather than state dollars, like they tend to do sometimes, you can change the VARs number, right?
We could add an additional one in there for that department or fund. But at this point, we don't know if those funds are restricted. So if they're restricted, they need to be in their own fund.
And we can create our own, we can do that.
By resolution.
Oh, I mean, can we make a resolution right now to create or, create the fund?
No.
Not without noticing it.
Or the notice on the resolution.
Yeah, you have to, you cannot take action without notice, the public has to know.
And you have to have some kind of documentation.
To show them.
So, it gets published tomorrow, according to statute.
Yes.
We can also put in the paper for next month for the same thing, to rehear. Because if, if the numbers go up, that need to go up starting of the year, you can do that.
And we have to republish.
We can republish, and we can have another hearing.
So, three, three weeks, so the end of April, or the end of October, would be the turnaround time for that.
That gives us time to find out where the dollars are coming from, that gives us time to write the resolution. That pushes us into December.
It doesn't give us the time to do anything, it has them.
I'm pointing that way, us being the county.
Which they're already doing, so, I'm not writing a resolution.
No, but you could, you could, because the ti, the, the statutory time, as far as that is to, we have to publish and have the hearing. If we wanna re-notice, we could do another one, because we, there is time, like, our goal is to be done in November. We're not required, because we, we have until December 31st. So we, we do have time. I mean, I, my, my thing would be publish what we're set to go, and we go forward, and then we try to work that stuff out. And then if we can re-notice, if we think we're gonna have something, and we still have time to make the changes before and meet our requirements, and still get adopted before December 31st. But I, yeah, I'm in, I don't support you just create, well, you can't, tonight, before you go home to, and, you know, we just, we can't do that, but we've got, like you said, the three weeks.
And contracts still have to be negotiated.
Right.
They still have to be PA approved. And from what I saw, that was only a Golden Dell office, so is there gonna be a White Salmon one as well? And will that add into the cost?
I think if, if people think that's all gonna get hammered in three weeks.
Yeah, I think it's crazy, but at least, I'm just holding it out there as far as that, we don't have to make a...
But that is the only way it's possible.
The only way it's possible is to do that.
And I realize what you're talking about, that is six months, but I would, I'd plead for my duty, that we still are over a million dollars out of balance, and Jen has a significant amount of work to do, as we all do, with the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office, to complete that process.
Clerk Snell?
Yeah, it's all right.
You had your hand up.
I, we thought what I was gonna say, I was trying to find a way to do it before the end of the year, but it's really obvious going into the year, so...
Okay, so, if we're, been pushing and everything, and we've made agreements with another county, and we've been working towards having our BHA and going out on our own, eh, by November, how can we do that this year and hire people and pay people and create these positions?
I'm not sure how you were gonna do that without a supplemental in the first place.
Okay, and can we do a supplemental so that we can do that?
Yes, the supplemental, yes, the next supplemental.
Which is October.
I think so, I don't have the calendar in front of me.
Because we're gonna have to add that into the supplemental if that's our plan. But that would be really weird, that if we can add into the supplemental for this year to create an organization, in essence, a smaller one.
Oh, no, that, I mean, you would have to have it into a current, I mean, unless all of, all of this...
The current supplemental would have to go in the Health Department, already set up stuff. You're not creating a new fund, you can't do that now, it would be, at least...
So, is that one option that we can do, is we can add it into the Health Department's budget underneath Health Department for next year, rather than creating a whole new department?
But I think we would still have to...
I would boil down to restricted funds would be my, I guess it's the same argument that Bren has been saying.
In setting up the VARs number in the budget, I mean theoretically, sure, you can post the budget now, and then change it in three weeks if they manage to get the VARs numbers up and right.
I, I can't answer that question without, without the state, without reviewing what the funds are and what the requirements are.
Today, there's nothing to change at this point, because there, there is no way to do it. We don't know, we have, maybe, once we have more information, we may have some other tools, solutions in the interim and the interim interim, and then we know where we're going long-term. But none of those are really relevant today in the next two hours, it's like, you gotta publish what you got.
Right.
So...
And then you're essentially waiting on a contract before you're doing anything else.
Well, no, you gotta do a lot of things at the same time to prepare for that, yeah. So, we can create a, in essence, a, a sub-department like Environmental Health or something that's a restricted fund, because we don't wanna commingle these health monies in the general fund, we really don't, because we wanna keep good, close track of that.
And I don't know that we can. We won't know, we, we don't know that we can until we know exactly where they're coming from.
Right, but, but we can create that under Public Health in the October supplemental, so that we can hire and everything after November 7th. And then we can put out a new, you know, start advertising again for the budget. We still put this one out tomorrow, start advertising for three weeks out, that gives us the time that we can then incorporate all that into that budget, and it's just another public hearing, right? I mean, there's a lot to it, but it's just, in essence...
If this is done and built before, before November, yes? We can leave the public hearing open and then re-advertise for adjustments, have another public hearing, and then do what we need to do to adopt before December 31st. As far as the timing, I'd have to sit in front of a calendar.
Figure it out, it's potentially, it's doable. But at this point, we have so many unknowns.
Correct.
Depends on, on the VARs numbers and stuff too. I mean, if you have it as a sub-fund, you could just take that whole revenues and expenses and move it.
It's messy.
It is messy.
You see, that's my worry is we're...
It's journal vouchers, it's, yeah.
Which we just hear, we don't like to do it.
To get it set up real fast, and then it's gonna take five years to fix.
Yes, I prefer not to.
Yeah. Okay.
Very leery about restricted funds when I don't know where these funds are coming from.
We'll get the answers to that.
The example would be, Dave, you would remember the boating fund. There was someone who chose to put that in the general fund, and when I had to go get numbers for state auditor, Danny had everything as receipts in a file drawer for me, because, and then we got in trouble with state auditors because they're restricted funds and it can't be in the general.
Can't be mingled into the general.
Yep.
What I can offer, the first supplemental of the new year can, can be moved too. I, that's flexible.
Right, that's, I think that's an arbitrary...
It's tentatively always scheduled for the end of the first quarter, so that everybody has, like...
For normal things, not creating an absolutely new business.
Yes.
Yeah, dropped the ball on this one three weeks ago.
Right hand or left hand?
Jen, you've done a great job getting this budget and ready to go tomorrow, and that's what we have to do. But I think when we have our public hearing, we need to leave it open, right? And then we'll get the information, get, figure out, we know it's gonna be a restricted fund.
Well, until we get the contract and look, yeah, we don't know.
And a draft contract is good enough to set it up, correct?
It depends on whether it...
I'm gonna agree to that right now.
I would, I would imagine it would depend on if it specified where the revenues are coming from.
Yeah, I don't wanna say yes, because I don't know what I'm saying yes to.
Haven't seen it.
I appreciate you both sitting there giving me your input, and I hope three weeks from now, you're both still sitting there giving me your input at that time.
Are you worried you're gonna have a heart attack?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm doing fine.
You worried about them?
I think Jen needed both your left and right hand earlier.
Oh, I can see it.
She's way better than she was.
I, I, I can see the steam still there.
I, that, I mean, it's either that or we just walk away from it, or, you know, because we can't budget for it and we can't figure it out. And, you know, we've jumped through every hoop we can in order to get to this point, so we're still providing services. I think if we don't get this done, we're gonna probably burn a lot of bridges.
But I don't know that we can't get it done, because like we heard, there may be another comprehensive out there, or another telehealth, or another something that can extend this for six months to where we can build a program correctly.
And if we could, we would have, and that would have been our first option, and that's a very, very first thing we would have done. And if you think that any, there's gonna be any shining light that's gonna show up to save our bacon at the last moment, well, I got a bridge to sell ya, it's falling down.
State has a problem with how we do it, they can fund mental health and build their own state department like they used to have.
I caution that this, just to, to keep in the back of your mind, that I do not see how this is gonna fully fund itself. We're, we are going to have to fund it on some level, to some degree.
That's how it's being, I haven't seen a contract yet, so, but I have an approved contract.
I, startup costs alone is gonna be required.
And that was built into that document, and we built in a bunch of extra fluff.
Just caution in the back of your mind.
Because I, I've voted no before, I'm not afraid of them.
Thank you.
I will publish what I have.
That's, that's all you can do.
That's all you can do.
Thank you.
And you being the best financial advisor that we have. You're way better than your peers.
What are you saying?
She doesn't have any peers, she's the only one.
I was gonna say, do you know what you just said about all them people in this room?
Our employees, they don't work for us, they work for other people.
You know, sometimes you should just stop digging.
I think he worked for us, so does that one.
Just...
So does that one. Stop him while he's behind.
That tape for Commissioner Christopher.
Just to be clear, so the rest of us should continue to operate as if we can get this all done by January 1, and continue with the resolutions for a new department, and new positions, and an org chart, all the things that need, other things need to happen. We don't wanna stop that, or then have Jen figure out, or then figure out there's a way to get that fiscal piece done, right? Just wanna be clear.
I guess I would say that I'm of the opinion that instead of asking us, yes is my answer, but I don't wanna say yes for somebody else that can't do that. So I would suggest that, yeah, you need to take that up with the people in the departments and the electeds that have to do those things and make sure that it can be done. So whether that's Finance Committee or what, that would be my recommendation.
So I, my fear right now is, is that our goal is, is that this'll be its own standalone director-level position. But there's a small likelihood that we could get that accomplished by the time that we do, for the November 7th opening date, and we may have to put it under Health for that time. Now the question is, is are we going to leave it under Health as a, not a director-level position, but, you know, a deputy director of this fund or whatever for next year? Or do, can we switch it over, you know, on the first of the year, this is going to become its own department?
When you're submitting, I think, with the group submitting an org chart to the state, as part of the application.
As its, it's its own.
And as fully functioning by back to January 1st. So, all the other pieces, people you're talking about, most are in the room. So getting all the HR stuff done and the fiscal stuff, we, we'll just proceed and work through the process of getting your chart, fill up the boxes on it, the job descriptions, the pay grades, all of that stuff. What you can have a box filled by November is...
I think there's some challenges there, and we've talked about maybe using the professional services agreement to cover that November to January, it might be the fastest and easiest way to manage that, that would just get paid out of our budget, that we need from the funds that, you know, we can...
And will that be okay with the, you know, for next year? Because you're gonna be switching over from being a part of yours to becoming its own, and you just gotta...
I mean, I support it switching out, but it sounds like there's a lot of other things that are passed out of my curfew that would maybe not be the best choice. I don't know.
If that's what's approved by the state, then we're just looking for short term, January 1.
Right.
Providing what fiscal comes up with, then that would start the.
I mean, in essence, we're a vendor, the way they're writing it up, we're a vendor until January, or is it till June, till January?
Until we have a BG license. So they were assuming that we would get that by January.
Right.
So there's a vendor contract versus a, uh, facility contract.
Facilities contract. And so when we get to facilities contract, that's when it would make sense to have it under its, its own complete umbrella and everything.
Listen, there's one not in the room that we already trying to figure out if they can cohabitate in the public works building until the juvenile gets out. I don't know what the timeline is. Sending it up for a January 1 department, if that's possible, um, with the juvenile still located around this building, obviously. I don't know. There is money in the, the FO's documents for a thousand direct for the building, which should cover, might cover. I don't know.
Might for a while.
So we'll just keep doing what we can do and while the fiscal folks are doing what they can do and hopefully we converge in the same place.
I will say that the, the contract with Beacon is going to have that budget that we looked at this morning. That means the positions is, are built into the budget. So until we have an approved, like this is actually what we're going to do. These are the staff we're going to hire. That contract's not final until that contract's not final. It sounds like maybe they're not comfortable starting, so.
But we can find out where the dollars come from, whether it's state or fed, so we can, we can figure out where the dollars are coming from. It's just what that number is going to be.
I, I just heard, I thought I heard them saying we're comfortable with the law. Either way, we need to fast track that conversation and make sure.
Yep.
I guess from the HR, we'll do what we need to do and if it's good to go January 1, fine. If it's not good to go, at least that part's done already.
Right.
For whenever it came to.
Yep.
Just reading pieces.
Any further discussion? Who needs a drink?
I.
You got it. You, I'm glad somebody got the jam.
All right. Are you ready for the consent?
Yes, sir.
And the bills and things that we actually know how to do. Not creating a new department.
Building a new business.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda item, uh, items noting that we're pulling number 10 is being pulled at Director King's request.
We're pulling number four.
Or sorry, pulling number four, uh, at Director King's request, which is the burn van extension. Uh, so we are approving a total of 10 items.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrants the amount of $303,201.28 for the date ending September 19th, 2022.
Second motion.
There's a motion, a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Board pending.
Puppy needs his chiropractic.
I give you a second.
Oh, puppy.
Yeah. So for clarification, everybody on the burn van, it did go exten, uh, extended in zones one and two, which is Nickleton and Goldendale, but did not extend in zone three for White Salmon.
Yeah.
I should have made my motion a little more clear, but.
Yeah. That's the way it was supposed to be. Uh, any, um.
I have a, well, crap. Rob left and I didn't call Rob back in. Um, Mr. Rob, if you hear me, come back.
I don't think he wants to.
I don't think he wants to either.
He's probably made it down the hall yet.
How serious is it?
Yeah. Go ahead. We're going to be here for a speech anyway. Um, ran the numbers.
On.
Oh, okay. And, um, based on 2018, would, their numbers are low based off what they paid. Uh, their first number for 2018 is low by 104,754. Their number in 2019 is low by 54,219. Uh, and their number in 2021 is low by 178,906.
That's pretty significant, 21.
How they, how they set it up?
Yeah. So it's not as far off as their original.
Were, they're, they're, they're getting closer.
Yep.
Dead man walking?
So I'll let you chew on.
No, if you come in and there's Vis Queen on the floor.
Chew, chew on that.
Having some painting done.
Depends on how long I'm kicking these cords and these tangles getting tangled up in my feet. However long that lasts, then it might be dead man walking because eventually I'm going to rip the cords onto the wall. I can see it coming. So I'm just reminding you.
At least you wouldn't have to worry about being on.
Evidence. Um, that's that reminder. And the second thing why I'm asking is I didn't know if the board thought this might be a good time to discuss, uh, whether what we wanted to do with our vacant staff position, uh, or at least have entry level conversations, um, as such, or when a good time to do that might be, or what have you.
What do you think?
I'm making an assumption that we, we have lots of staff positions.
R.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm assuming. Not the collective Rs, but the specific Rs.
Did we change so that hours worked aren't going to show up anymore?
Yeah, I think you're supposed to put an R in there. There wasn't.
So do we, can we send out an email?
But you're a pirate, there's a lot of Rs going around.
Brenda, I mean, Heather sent out an email, but it didn't. Yes, I will follow up with the auditor's office.
Let, let everybody know, I'm not going to sign any more of these if it still has actual hours worked.
I will follow up with the auditor's office. That's their area of concern. Yes, there is the question of, of replacing the staff position in the commissioner's office. And, um, I know what, I've talked to, I think most of the individual, I don't think I've talked to commissioners or, and talked to Lee, and of course, it's your guys' decision. But we have talked a lot about moving away from only having one person have the keys to any part of the kingdom and, and, um, as you know, Lee's job is a critical job and important job and is the institutional knowledge of the commissioners and the resolutions and, um, not having someone working with her in knowing that knowledge all now just resides with Lee and that's not necessarily fair to her, in my opinion. Um, and there's a lot of work to be done in that department, but what that looks like and what you do.
And I would add that we need to get on the ball and decide what we as board are doing with our attorney contract and give clear guidance to staff. We need to get on board with what we're doing with who is going to be delegating what attorneys for court and give clear guidance to staff. And if that is, our staff is going to be delegating attorneys, we have to look at, the, the court said that was between 10 and 20 hours a week, uh, of, of workload that you're now putting on one staff member that's doing the job of two. And I'm sure as, if we are replacing, the sooner we can, uh, move about doing that, the more it would, um, help their mental health.
So I had the preliminary discussion with Amanda McKinney because they have their, an entire department for, um, public defense. And so they have the admin and all of that. And so the possibility of maybe contracting with them in order to provide that service because it's, you know, they want it to be under a, uh, somebody who is an attorney. And so, right? And so my first thought is, is well, can we work with Yakima and they could do that and look at that for the public defense contracts? And would that possibly be a way to get us in with some of their public defenders as well? So I've had one conversation.
I guess I'd say I'm not opposed to that, but again, we have to be ready. And I don't want this to be like the mental health that it's the, the ninth hour of the ninth day and, you know, you're on the one yard line and realize you can't, you don't have time for another play.
Is there an effective date for what you're talking about? I mean, we're.
January 1.
January 1.
Got you.
So if that's the direction we're moving, uh, I.
But again, that's, that's no different than saying, oh, we're going to hope that somebody comes in and saves the day with mental health, you know, at the last hour. That's not us. I just, our own, our own hospitals don't even want to touch that with a ten foot pole. Why would anybody else want to?
Um, I'll take the first piece, which is the staffing, as far as I concur, as far as I think it's dangerous to have a single point, uh, it's like a single point of failure where the, the clerk of the board is the, is, is like the, um, the hub that is all the spokes are attached to. And that's not something that you can even job shadow, you know, like at some point in the far distant future, when the, the current clerk retires or moves to Belize to.
Or has to go to Brazil.
Or, or whatever it is.
Because of all the BOE calls.
Right. Because of that stuff that you can't, I mean, it takes years to learn that. And that is kind of, was always sort of the background behind why there was a clerk and a deputy clerk was so that there was, there was somebody else learning all that stuff because it really is on the job training. So I think we definitely need to move forward with replacing that. I think this other conversation about, I mean, that just adds more fuel to it if we end up where we're, you know, that there's another, we're adding more duties to that job and that's even more so. Um, yeah, as far as the defense, um, contract and the, the management of that, yeah, we need to, I, that's, I'm, I'm very concerned about that, that we need to have that locked down because January 1's coming.
Right.
And I mean, that, but that has two components. That has the, that has the management of the attorneys and we, has the other component of the attorneys, which are, we have, we have an offer right now for some.
And I think we heard of the potential liability.
Well, we didn't, we're not taking that offer. And so, so we have two problems, about what are we doing?
Are we setting up a meeting or are we just sitting here doing nothing?
Right. We heard, no, no, I agree. I agree. We're doing nothing. That's what we're doing.
And we heard the potential liability of doing nothing.
Yeah, well, that's not an option.
Right.
We keep being presented with all these, that's not an option.
Not an option.
Problem, mental health. Well, if we can't do this, then there's not going to be any.
But the question was whether we wanted to repost it in the paper at a fixed dollar amount and see who responds.
Right.
Or do we want to have a meeting, um, with the people who did give us an offer and see if we can hammer out a different number in a negotiation sitting here and there?
Can we?
Or which direction we want to go from there?
Since we got mad and said, take your offer and.
We never responded back to them.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
Oh, I thought we said.
No, so we could, we could enter into negotiations if we wanted to. I still think I can't see a negotiation that is going to start from, because I'm not thrilled with, even if it negotiated down to what it's currently at, I think that is.
Well, that's negotiation.
So you're, you're saying.
I would, I mean, my, my, my preference would be that we re-advertise in, and not in the local paper necessarily, but however, I, I, see, this is not an area of.
It went out last time with the Washington State Law Association.
Right.
So it was a direct email to anybody that was a member, which their member of Oregon and Washington.
Okay. Okay. Well, who, okay. Right. But that we rework it so it is a number. So it's the number as far as what we're comfortable, what we think it should be. And then also in their description of this, these were the, these were the number of hours that were worked to provide these services in the last two or three years. Let them do the math.
I don't think.
I don't think they have accurate numbers.
Well, you have the numbers that they gave us.
Right. But that's what the judge and.
But I call, well, then let's then.
Then let's have a conversation. I just, we got, we, we put it out there. We got an offer. I think the best thing we can do, as I hear it, there's only five people in the gorge who can do the job and two of them are already doing it. Um, and the other person that can do it is all the way down in Vancouver, um, that does it for Skamania County. How they dealt with this, this setup, um, is picking one of the two that we have with regards to, um, how they manage, you know, the cases and all that.
Right.
They got pulled off. They already did that. So I think it'd be a good idea to have a conversation because in the end, we'll probably end up having, have a conversation with them anyways. And I, as much as I hate it, I mean.
And if I just, I'm not buying it. I am not that if you, because the, the idea that there's only five in the gorge, yeah, there's five in the gorges that live here, but if their numbers are anywhere close to being accurate and it's 10 hours a week, I'll drive from Vancouver and do my 10 hours during the week.
The judges say they're doing tele.
Right.
You know, whatever. We're doing court by Zoom. So, you know, you don't necessarily even have to be here that much because you could speak to your defendants, um, via the, the jail Zoom and how much of it do you actually have to drive, uh, once or twice a month? But do, do the attorneys in Hood River and the Dials in Portland and Vancouver?
Right.
Do they know that?
Do they know that?
Uh, and I would venture to say that they don't.
Moscow County's been doing arraignments by, via video with Norcore for 15 years.
Well, we're a little behind as far as technology goes.
Jury, right?
Not the jury, it's just the arraignments.
Arraignments, right.
I mean, we're doing arraignments via now, too.
Yeah.
That's a really recent.
Yeah.
Right. And COVID forced it.
Yeah. But the trials, no, I don't think so. Or I don't know.
Which we should have saw some savings when we started doing that by arraignments. But there's never savings. I, I think the only thing is, is we enter into negotiations with the two and if that's fruitless, then we, then we post it. I guess our only option at this point.
Well.
That's how I'm worried.
I just think negotiations are, I know what, if, unless we have other people in the mix, there's nothing to negotiate.
There isn't, right.
Why would I negotiate? It's like I'm the only show in town. You've just told me I'm the only show in town.
They got you by the short and curly's.
And I, you're, this is what you're going to pay. Or you're going to find somebody else and it's, I mean, we can, we can try, but I think we're running out of time.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't mind advertising, like, now, if we sent it out to advertise again and got nothing.
Then.
Does this contract or this offer still stand or is this offer immediately thrown out the minute we go back and advertise?
I don't know. I don't know if that'd be a.
I think you have to, uh, deny the one because it's an RFP.
Did we deny it?
Before you go out.
I thought we denied it when we got it.
See, the question I would have too is that do we even have to do an RFP or did we have to do an RFP? Because I think it's a, it's like a professional services contract and I don't know.
Do we have to do an RFP in this place?
Once we did, does it, does that?
Hopefully we might find new blood out.
Right. Would find new blood out there.
Well, we did try and we found nothing.
And I have advertised in the Yakima paper before, in the Oregonian before, we've never ever gotten any response.
Well, that's a PA question, but I suspect you would reject all proposals.
Right.
We didn't?
We did not reject. It did not.
No, we haven't responded, I guess. No, we haven't responded, I guess.
Okay, I thought we did.
Because I would I would warn that because same idea, that doesn't mean you go back out for a bid, they can come back with something that's.
Even higher. I I think the best thing to do is enter into negotiations. They use the excuse and example that according to their document that that we raised at 30% for the others. So theirs should go up 33%. And I would say, well, if you look at the hourly rate of you versus them, according to the documents that you sign and under penalty of perjury of how many hours you work, then yours is already 500% theirs. So absolutely not.
The other option is to change the contract to an hourly and hope you don't get billable hours.
And suddenly now 60 hours.
That's my point.
Then you'd better be able to prove it.
It would be that way for two years, and you'd be signing under penalty of perjury. That might be the option for whatever we do, regardless of what we do, just because we're on a time crunch. It's a one year contract, and we'll work on this next year and try to get more interest.
So when do you think the earliest we can get them in for? Because it's all an executive would be? You think we can do that?
I don't know that the prosecutor is going to let you have it under executive.
Contract negotiations, isn't that the holding purpose of?
Depending.
Yeah, there's, there's a nine million reasons why I would think we could, but we can't. I think negotiations is typically labor negotiations, con labor contracts. But again, that's not my area.
Say, union contracts, heck, yeah, that's that's executive.
Clearly the PAs.
Open contracts with James Dean Construction on what the road is going to cost.
We don't, we don't enter into negotiations. That's a bid amount.
We understand that.
Oh, then fine, we'll have it in public, and the public can hear about it.
I don't know that they'll show up if you're having it in public.
Well, I mean, you put in a bid, you gotta say why you're worth 600 and something dollars there.
I guess my question still stands is if we continue to leave the the offer out there and great, we got your bid. How come we can't readvertise to get more bids? We're just extending the life of the RFP or whatever.
You could, but you have, it would have to be under the same what we will be. I guess we can add, you couldn't change the, like, we didn't put a number. We just asked, here's the services that we want, what's your bid?
Right. So now we can, we can go, thank you for your bid. We'll consider that. Here's the services we want. Here's the number of hours that they've used in the last couple of years. Here's what they've got paid in the last couple of years. See if we get another offer that goes with the offer that we already have on the table. I don't know that we have to deny the offer on the table while continuing to hunt for more offers.
They wouldn't get, this might be a question for the. Just repost it with saying you're extending the. Yeah, we would have no problem with reposting if we weren't changing it. We obviously, if we don't change anything, we're not going to get anything different. I don't think we can change it without denying and starting over with another. And then you are, you run the risk of if you get no other offers, and then they they're not bound to their original offer either. And again, it was just an offer.
Well, and I would warn that if you're doing it that way, it's just like a public works project. You know, you know, the people that left the room on this building when you guys accepted the offer on this building was the guy and his boss, and he was apologized to his boss when he left the room, that he left a million dollars on the table. In other words, they underbid compared to what everybody else is.
Right.
But then you have the same thing that other bids that bids came in and there was nobody or one person. Now they know they can jack that bid up a little bit because odds are there's nobody else going to compete with it. And if you if you don't accept what's out there, or try to negotiate it, you might end up with a higher.
I'm just saying that we, what I would do is is we sit down and we talk with them. We say, explain to me how your hours versus how much we're paying and how this is fair to the citizens of the county. And if in the end, they're like, no, this is what we're going to do. This is it. And we say, okay, well, then we're going to put this position out for this much per hour. And this is what we're going to pay. Maybe it's 150% of what the district court makes. But first, I think you you have the conversation, and then we go back and then we put it out for this is how much we'll pay per hour. But and then if there and then if their hours go from five to 60, well, then we'd better see exactly why you did that. And we we should have.
We have that much control or oversight to see how they did that.
Well, technically.
Or compare, you know, you you have, wait a minute, you have 60 billable hours with the county per week, but you also have 60 billable hours with your personal private practice? Are you saying you personally work 120 hours? That's not us to audit that.
What is to audit is not audit that, but it is to audit if they're, if we go to an hourly rate and they're submitting their their paper, they have to justify, what are you billing us for? We can certainly question.
I mean, the funny thing is, is we're sitting here saying like, oh, we think that they'll go to however many hours. But we do that at the district courts already. And people, I mean, they're supposed to be ethical and attorneys and sign.
Like you said, I honestly think that, you know, if the district courts get 150 an hour, and there's obviously three of them over there that can do this job. Because there's five total in the county supposedly. I just don't think the five.
What?
It's a hundred dollars.
So if if they're willing to work for 100 an hour, I don't think they're willing to sign on to do this contract like this, where if it was hourly and they were making 200 an hour, I think those three that are over there are going to sign up for this.
If they can't see this.
If they can't, you're going to spur that competition. Because I don't think they're willing to take it on as a yearly contract, but they will take it on as an hourly case by case contract. Kind of a scenario, you know what I mean?
All right. Well, I mean, I would support getting them in here and having a discussion. I would, I would have a conversation with the PA to see, can it be an executive session? And are they comfortable? Will they come in and talk to us on the record? Are they going to ask to talk to one so that it's off where it's not a public meeting? So. Do you, I'm wondering with only one, if you have, get a lot of question for me, if you only have one, if you have to accept that proposal, then negotiate as opposed to, I mean, like when we did other ones, and you had multiples, you picked the one, and then you started the negotiations with them. You only have one. So, I mean, I don't know if you have to accept their proposal, negotiate, and then decline later. Yeah, that's another question for the PA's office, but I make sure we didn't run afoul of process.
Okay, well, we got to do something.
Do the two of you think you have enough guidance to get us the next step?
And whether we have to accept the offer in order to have the negotiation.
Better to ask ahead of time.
Okay, so that's item number one of the many items. We started talking about the staff member, but then again, sidetracked again. So what about staff members?
As much as I want to replace the position right now, we just got our number back that we are still $1.5 million in the hole. And if we're going to make other, ask other people to make reductions in order to manage this budget of $1.5 million in the hole, I think we have to be willing to accept that we are going to have to as well until we find revenues. But.
I guess where I'm at is the the same story with one person holding all the keys to the castle. I would also say that we should be looking to promote our own. And eventually, Lee will decide she's not here anymore. And I would certainly hope by then we have somebody in place to take the reins. Or we're going to be in trouble again. I can't in any way, shape, or form recommend going without filling that position. I already think there's too much hourly time on her plate as we go to lunch and you see her typing at her computer, because I don't know this woman ever goes to lunch. I can't say you're taking on more workload because I've made choices, budget choices. No, I can't. I I say we have to fill it. It's just a matter of how.
Full time, part time?
I'm a fool.
That wasn't an opinion. It was just a question.
Because I don't know how you find a part time that you can. Boy, I'm going to have to be cautious on this one. Originally, I was thinking part. But as we're potentially adding all these new duties to one position, I think there's going to have to be more handoff of duties than there was in the past. And I'm going to be relying on our clerk to be handing off duties. So.
And we've talked to Lee, and she's in agreement, just timing and and other things to document a lot of this institutional, at least the processes on the same we call the help desk software, the Jen has put the a lot of her processes, it takes time to do that, you know. And so Lee's never been opposed to doing that. We just never could get.
Well, and I think, yeah, we're going to end up taking something, you know, some things off her plate too, and putting it over there or in there to try to delegate responsibilities so that there's not too much workload on any one person. It's just a matter of, originally, I was thinking maybe it could be done part time. But then, as we start adding all these duties, I start going, how? Without getting backlogged. But I also start saying, how do you train for the eventual shift that that person's then moving up to be the clerk? How many, how many people are applying for part time work out there?
I'm not getting a lot of people applying for full time work.
That's my point. So now you're only paying part time with no benefits? And what's the quality of employee? There are some good ones out there. We have a couple of them.
Part time do give benefits to throw over 20 hours.
But but it's it's harder to find a quality employee willing to work for part time.
Commissioner Anderson, just to clarify, are you suggesting waiting till you're farther through the budget process to to have the discussion? I mean, is that just trying to when you?
I think we need to know if if that 10 to 20 hours a week that the court's doing is going to come here or not. That'll make it a pretty close, pretty quick decision. I think we need to know where we're at as the budget goes continues to go on. I mean, I remember back in 2009, you know, if somebody left, there was a hiring freeze. You usually didn't fill a lot of those positions when it was getting tight, right?
But are you going to do the same thing with the position that's open in the other departments, like the auditor's office who was just here? We have not done that yet. So you would be picking one position to do that to and not the other four or five that are out there.
How do you, how do you plan we're going to?
There's a hiring freeze. There needs to be a hiring freeze.
How are we going to fill a 1.5 million dollar hole?
Well, first off, we have to start telling some of these people no.
So I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I I'm here. So I'm here, you say, Commissioner Anderson, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not saying no, you're just saying not yet or not now. Is that correct? Just trying to.
That's what I would say is is we we need to have some of these really hard conversations, and all the doors have to be open and.
I'm a now.
Why now?
Just because I think I think for one thing, I need to actually believe the I I think there are certain things that are, they're just nonnegotiable, and that's one of them. Like, I don't think you can, any more than I I think we have, there is a hierarchy of of positions, and I I'm sorry, there is. And there are, there is a hierarchy of priorities that get funded as far as on staff. We still have things, we have a lot of things that are discretionary. We still do. They may not seem to it to people, but there there is, like, and there are certain things that have to be funded. They just have to be funded. And we have to figure out a way to do that. I also want to fully understand, we keep, we keep talking about these budget deficits, budget deficits, and I I get that, but I want to fully understand what we're talking about because there's a difference between an a on paper budget deficit and an actual budget deficit, which is here's how much money we had, and a year later, we have this much money now. If you're, if we're, and it's not based on, if we adopt a budget that, again, I keep going back to that, we don't spend every dollar. We never do. And I'm not going to lay people off if a year later, my fund balance actually went up because I'm budgeting, just like we did in 2022. In this year, we budgeted, so there was no use of fund balance at all. That's actually, we should, if everything plays the way it's supposed to, our fund balance should have actually got, should go up at the end of the year. Now, granted, now we have supplementals, and we're talking about a half a million. It is, but we adopted a budget that was no use of fund balance. And if there are no supplementals, and we all know we have staff positions open, we have all this stuff, we are not going to spend every one of those dollars, and I'm not going to lay people off if I'm going to grow fund balance. Now, again, I've said before, I am much less comfortable with banking on how much of that unspent because I think the delta between has gotten much tighter, but it doesn't have to get to zero. To me, I don't consider that. That is, it may be if you look at our budgets back to since I've been here, there wasn't, I I don't think we ever had a year that we did not budget a use of fund balance in the general fund, ever. That we, and we yet, when you look back, we never, we had, until the most recent things, we actually were growing our fund balance because, again, we were estimated as Jen running over here now. And so I really need to understand that before if it's.
And so to me, there's a big difference between a department of two, you're letting go one, or you're not filling one position, or a department, say, let's call it building upstairs or planning, where one of those receptionist type person left. Now, you know, can we, can we make them do both jobs? Is can we have somebody else fill? And they got seven people in the department. So in a department that has seven, could we take one away and not be the worst thing in the world? And I think the answer is yes.
Right.
But in a department of two, you just cut the manpower manpower by half or woman power.
Right.
So that would be like taking the assessor's office and reducing their employees in half. That's a big, that's that's, there's a difference between an office of two and an office of five or seven. Yes, Ms. Jen?
I just heard budgeting fund balance, so I'm.
I thought you were coming here to.
No, I was going to tell you when I, when I heard the footsteps over there.
We had talked, I know that's one of the things she's analyzing prior to the to your next meeting is looking at that fund balance to see, right now, see where it's at.
And I I had asked for direction to email last night as well. So I did look at my balance for the general fund, and and it is sitting at 3.4 budgeted fund balance where that ends up. You know, there's always some wiggle room there. 1.25 of that obviously is reserved. We can't touch it. So we're looking at, you know, the difference between those two.
But you are correct. The more you tighten that down at some point.
It is.
It's uncomfortable. And it was uncomfortable when I.
Right. I mean, I again, I acknowledge that. I am less comfortable banking, like I said, I've said before, we always felt like if we got within 5%, that was balanced because of the, when you look at past history, I don't believe that anymore, but I don't think it's zero. I think it's somewhere between zero and five is the that, because again, you can adjust that. It doesn't, the whole thing doesn't burn down in one year. If you budgeted three, the use of, and it actually turned out to be four, you went backwards by 1%. You can make an adjustment the next year, but don't plan on, oh, we're going to have 10% left over, and you went down by 7%. That's would be really bad. But as I said, I'm not comfortable, but I don't, we don't, for me, I don't have to get to zero because I think there's going to be unspent. But we got to get close, but it's going to be hard for me if we are planning on 100% of you, you know, using no, we don't budget the use of any fund balance, and I'm laying people off. Because my experience tells me we have never spent 100% of. Because my experience tells me we have never spent a hundred percent of our budgeted expenses ever. We did, but that was, that was more of a, um, that was, we could have fixed that with landfill revenue for, we, that was as much a policy discussion about what, how much money, you know, we could have been covering all of that all along, we could do it now. We could just reallocate no money to public works, we have all kinds of other discretionary things that we could say, instead of four nine or five two of landfill into the general fund, we're going to do six now. Oh, the budget's fixed. We had to get rid of it somewhere else, but, and we, that's what we used to do, but we can't now because there's only, we only have nine two to work with.
And potentially what we'll have to do at this point, like.
Exactly, that is what we're going to have to do.
In order to balance a preliminary budget, um, you know, if we want to budget the landfill at nine three like we have for two thousand and twenty-two, that's what I'm looking at right now, um, as well as potential use of fund balance. And I, ideally, I wouldn't want to budget fund balance at this point in time. Like, in a perfect world, it would be, like last year, we managed to do it with, with zero fund balance because that gives me room to be able to budget fund balance during supplementals. And so if I'm budgeting a good chunk of fund balance right now at this point in the game, then, you know, I lose that ability in the supplemental process.
Okay, try to.
Come down to, we got two million bucks and that's how we balanced everything because it was the feds. Were you burnt through all that, did we not?
Not all of it.
The first one, the.
The first one.
The first, with the exception of a hundred thousand dollars, um, give or take ten thousand dollars or so.
Good, and that's, that's how we balanced it, two million dollars. And costs don't go down. And so I know the next year I'm going to need that two million dollars.
A wrap.
Okay? And I think we've shrunk that down as tight as we can get. The only saving grace we have right now is, is that a lot of these really high dollar positions aren't filled.
Well, I think we still have more to do and I think this board, before we even call people back, top budget needs to decide what people we need to call back to top budget and what parts of that budget do we agree on need to be removed.
Yes, that's what I was going to.
And bring them back, so in, whether we do that on a Tuesday or a Thursday, we need to be able to go through the budget book as us, having discussions on, are you comfortable with this number? Or not comfortable, because there's plenty of things I'm not comfortable with and I wouldn't say plenty, there's a handful.
And I know the email I sent to you was at six o'clock last night.
Yeah, I've been looking at it.
I have not.
It was at six o'clock last night, I'm, I apologize, that's when I was able to finally get everything kind of compiled into a visual dashboard. And easier to see things as a whole. I would like to be able to have a workshop, probably the first workshop in October of just the finance team with you guys and, um, go through that, just what you were saying.
I have, it's the finance steering committee that they're waiting for. Uh, just leave the stuff, I'll come back down.
Well, thank you.
I don't, I think it's, we're not going to have any more on this.
I, I have.
You're just going alone on this and totally.
No, you can call him, you can do it.
Commissioner Sauter.
No, I'm serious.
Okay.
So is the verbal, is the verbal to post it at step three, step three, up to step three?
Give us closer numbers.
I, he, it's what he's going to do?
No, apparently he called me to do it.
Oh shit.
I think. Because I know a lot of departments are listening, I think, tell me, and correct me if I'm wrong. The number she sent out last night is, at this point in the process, we still have more process to go through.
More process to go.
You know, if we were a month from now still saying that number, that's different. I mean, there's still.
Well, we are saying that number right now.
Well, there's still, right, there's still some discussions to be had that, that could bring that number down, that we'll have to bring that number down, so.
Yeah, I, I, I personally, I see four, five hundred thousand on the table pretty easy.
But you're, but the bucket of one-time monies is dwindling.
Running dry.
And that's what we've been able to use so far.
And that's what saved our bacon the last two years and now it's getting tight.
Well, um, there was a lot of work that went into that too, I don't want to, yes, it came in and it made the transition smoother and easier. Um, but we've done a lot of work as well on the reductions, finding new avenues, new ways to do things. I mean, just alone to the sum of, what, two point nine, is that the number I sent out last night that we've reduced?
Mm-hmm.
On this budget right now, so I'm, we are doing a lot of good work too, on our own, without trying to supplement with one-time funds. So, I mean, we, yes, we still have one point two five to figure out, but I don't think it's too far fetched. I think we can get really close to where we need to be.
Did I see in that email you had nine six from landfill?
I don't.
No, no, I.
Nine three.
I, I suggested budgeting at nine three, just like we did the two thousand and twenty-two. I, I said, should you want to max out at nine six, which I don't suggest doing.
Oh, is that how it was written?
That.
Okay.
And we talked this morning, we felt pretty strongly that.
I would not recommend that.
Realistic.
If, honestly, if landfill contract, everything hunky dory, everything moves along, the railroad gets happy and hires a bunch of engineers, honestly, I think ten five is a better number for next year.
What?
But.
That's a lot of.
But that's a lot of but. And I'm not really, I'm not ready to do that, I would rather do that as a show me and then I'll change it.
By this time next year, we should.
Or a smidge, or I have to have better knowledge and there's too many.
A lot of variables.
Just the amount of new revenues. Um, that, we're only really looking at existing, what's past, what's history, what's, there's a whole nother new game involved. Uh, and, and that, that can make a big change, but until that's a contract, it's speculation.
And I'm not going to budget on that.
No, wait, but I, same deal, if it was a contract, you might be able to budget two hundred. Thinking it's a mill. I think that's a safe estimate.
If, if you're right, and we all hope you are next year, that might be, it'd be, something will happen next year when we're back having the same discussions.
Well, that, that should help and then there should be new tax money on the table over here. Um, there should be seven hundred thousand insurance that we didn't have to spend for gap, add those up at least next year.
Yeah.
One year at a time for sugar, but there's.
What else on your list? You heard, sorry, you heard from both of these two, it's a yes, so.
And I, and he said step three in the way out, which is the typical up through step, one through three for the posting.
Um, yeah, how did, uh, prosecutors posting get up to one point five without prior? Maybe we just approved it that way and were never asked.
No, no, I'm, I'm assuming Casey asked that in the verbal, I, the, one through five takes a approval of the commissioner, so I, I don't know.
I saw that in the packet and I'm like, interesting, okay.
I think for that level of position, the professional license position, I think it's, yeah, I think, I think it makes sense.
Before we change the numbers?
Don't know.
It's a, I would think it's a valid request with that and how long we've been trying, he's been trying to fill those that often, you know, so.
Because I thought like by the time you got to five, you're moving up to the next rung.
Anyway, um, no, do you have a, uh, potential on, no, that's enough for you guys, thank you very much for all your guidance. Hopefully everybody got all the guidance they needed to move forward and do a great thing. Uh, Ms. Jen, do you have a recommendation of how you want to close the gap?
Uh, if you hit that four sixteen, it would close the gap.
So raise the number from four enough to close the gap?
Yep. Because of the higher.
This number, right, if they go up to four sixteen, then they're well over because they brought the second number up.
Well.
So.
Remember, I like it, the, the higher the, the main number is, as your CPI goes up, you get more. The increase on a larger number is more than the increase on a smaller number. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What else you got?
I got a meeting as well too, coming up.
No, that's, I think, good enough, everybody left.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the meeting for today, no workshop scheduled.
I will step down and second the motion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for signing on today.
We're down to seventeen, they all left. Well, that riveting conversation, which to me is the best part.
Yeah. How the mishmash gets made.
Yes.
Yep.